Good evening and welcome to the weekly Lawrence City Commission meeting. Vice Mayor Farmer is not going to be with us tonight. And Commissioner Shum, I'm sure, is running just a bit or two late. So we're going to go ahead and begin this evening. And the first item on our agenda are proclamations. And we have a proclamation to proclaim November 15th through December 24th, 2014 as Salvation Army kettle season. I know we have a representative here this evening. Come up and give us your name and tell us a little bit about the program. Be great.
Sure. Lieutenant Matt McClure. And we'll be doing our kettle ringing again this year. And we're excited to start the 2014 season off. Again, we thank Mayor, you, and the Commissioners for formally recognizing that. Our goal this year is $100,000. And that's going to help us through the whole rest of the year to help people throughout Lawrence. And I'm sure that the generous people of Lawrence would totally outgive $100,000. So I'm looking forward to that. So, there you go.
Well, Matt, we appreciate all the work that you and the Salvation Army does for, in helping people throughout the community. And I'd be happy to read the proclamation. It's a proclamation, "Whereas the Salvation Army in Lawrence, Kansas began in 1886. And whereas the Salvation Army has been providing services to the poor, lonely, and destitute of our community for over 100 years. And whereas the Salvation Army will continue to serve and administer to the needs of our community. And whereas the Salvation Army will continue to faithfully serve with heart to God and hand to man. Now therefore, I, Mike Amick, Mayor of the City of Lawrence, Kansas, do hereby proclaim November 15th through December 24th, 2014 as Salvation Army Christmas kettle season." Thank you very much for your hard work. And move on down. And I apologize now because I think my voice is gone. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. All matters listed on the consent agenda will be considered under one motion and will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion on those items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Are there any items on the consent agenda that a member of the Commission would like to have removed for separate consideration? No, sir.
Item six.
How about 5B?
Let me see. There were two items in the last week I've heard of.
Okay. Well, I've got item number two as claims and item 5B, which is the item, ordinance number 509, or 9053, authorizing the issuance of industrial revenue bonds for the Hare project. Was that it?
Yeah.
Okay. And then you said item number six?
Oh, that's right. I'm under oath.
Okay, so 5B. Yes. And what is this, Mike?
Nothing. Item number three.
Oh, okay. Okay. And then, are there any items on the consent agenda that a member of the public would like to have deferred for further consideration?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, 7B.
How about just seven? How about just item number seven?
Okay.
Okay. Okay. Got it. Okay. That covers them all. Okay, I would entertain a motion for approval of the consent agenda with the exception of items number two, 5B, and item number seven.
Moved. Second.
Motion made in second for approval made by Commissioner Shum, second by Commissioner Reardon. All in favor of that motion? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes four zero. Item number two are claims. I would entertain a motion for approval for 218, claims to 218 vendors, the amount of And payroll in the amount of $2,9418.21.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second for approval made by Commissioner Reardon, second by Commissioner Dever for those two claims. All in favor of that motion? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes four zero. And then there are claims to, eight claims to vendors on Rock Chalk Park-related items in the amount of $16,159.06.
Moved.
Second.
Motion made in second for approval. It was made by Commissioner Shum, second by Commissioner Dever. All in favor of that motion? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. That passes three to one. Mayor Erickson dissension. And item number seven is to approve fire and medical department policy on service to Lawrence and grant township during restricted access. Dave, you have a quick comment?
Yes. Mayor members of the Commission, the Chief developed this policy a couple months back. He's been following it. It follows their protocols to analyze certain events. For example, in Kansas Half-Meritorial, determine if it's appropriate to have staffing in Lawrence north of the river to provide emergency service to that area, to grant township. We have, obviously, we provide countywide annual service. We also provide fire service in Grand Township. Chief Bradford is here to respond to any questions that you might have. Really, I think it boils down to is the policy is to be aware of the situation and then to determine whether or not we need to have extra staff in Lawrence north of the river because of the possibility of bottom rack delays in the downtown corridor. Chief is here, and I know that Mr. Boyle with the North Lawrence Improvement Association has had a particular interest in this issue, and I've advised him, and he's on the edge of it.
Chief, did you have anything else to add?
No, sir.
Okay. Public comment, Ted?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. Yes, I would, I would like to thank Chief Bradford for all the hard work that he's done on this policy. And also David Corliss, our city manager. And just like to say that this has been a long time coming. And finally, now we'll have fire and medical protection when the bridge is restricted. So I just want to thank you and thank the people that were involved in it. So, thank you.
Thanks, Ted. Other comment on this item? Dave, also, thank you and Chief and others who worked on this. I know that we've kind of already put it into place and been working. So thank you from the Commission on that. Okay? So, any other questions or comments?
No.
Entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 9053. Oh, wait, I'm sorry. I thought I'd sneak that in. No, to approve item number seven, approve the fire and medical department policy on service to Lawrence and Grant Township during restricted access.
So moved.
Sorry. Motion made in second for approval made by Commissioner Reardon, second by Commissioner Shum. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes four zero. Back to item 5B. We, I think, getting ready to have a situation here. This is a second reading, right?
That's correct.
Okay. Go ahead.
This was, I believe, heard last Tuesday night.
That's correct.
It was not part of the discussion. I have previously voted against some of the parts of this program. I don't have a problem with supporting the industrial revenue bond. It doesn't do much to alter the density question and the parking issues and things like that. I did vote prior to this against a subsidy to it in terms of tax increment. Actually, the neighborhood was similar. Correct. And then I've not been supportive of the reduction in parking, but I don't have an issue with voting for this. I think you were trying to count the votes because of two-two votes.
Yeah, I was afraid that that was what was going to happen. I was going to ask to defer because I haven't supported the bonds through this process from per con. So, anyway. Any other questions? Okay. I would entertain then a motion for approval of ordinance number 9053.
Moved.
Second.
Motion made in second to approve ordinance number 9053 made by Commissioner Shum, second by Commissioner Reardon. All in favor of that motion? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. That passes three one. Mayor Erickson dissension. Next item is the city manager's report. Dave?
Mayor, Members of the Commission, just a few items to highlight in this week's report. I think it's been previously well-reported, but the city did get a safe route to school grant. We'll be working with the Health Department, School District, neighborhoods, and others to do some additional planning so that we can try and make sure that kids have a safer route to school. So, see that information there. David Cronin, our city engineer, has an update on the changes that are going to be happening at Bob Billings Parkway and George Williams Way. With the construction, we're going to be putting up four-way stop signs. The plans for the signalization are on their way to completion, and you will be asked to set a bid date for that here in 2015 so that the intersection can be signalized prior to the completion of the K-10 Bob Billings Parkway interchange. On a related note, as we are working on your 2015 street maintenance program, you will be seeing that here in the coming weeks. We also plan on then having a neighborhood corridor meeting to talk about the planned improvements along Bob Billings Parkway and to solicit neighborhood input in regards to what those improvements might be as well. So that's our general plan in regards to that. Scott's department put together our October building permit reports. So commend that to your reading. And you've also received some recent information in regards to some other interests on development as well in the community. Our MPO was involved in a bicycle and pedestrian count, again, following on that important theme about non-motorized transportation in the community. And finally, Parks and Recreation provided an update on the use of the sports pavilion. It's good extensive use. Reported to me that they had over 6,000 patrons on Saturday and again, over 6,000 patrons on Sunday.
Questions, Dave? Dave, thank you. We are on to the regular agenda. We have a number of items this evening. I do want to make mention that item number two, which was the request to rezone at 4101 West Sixth Street, has been deferred until December 2nd. I would ask people to silence our cell phones. It affects my hearing, you need to understand. So, anyway, silence your cell phones. We'll have a business meeting here. I know a number of you want to speak this evening. I would ask that we restrict our comments to three minutes. We'll time. I'll give you kind of a heads up, but you're more than welcome to be able to speak this evening at the meeting. So, the first item on the agenda is consider adopting on first reading ordinance number 9041, amending STO 85, Section B, to include a prohibition against stopping, standing, or parking in marked bicycle lanes. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. I'm Maria Kaminska, Assistant City Attorney. The proposed ordinance that is before you this evening has been the topic of a lot of discussions since the spring of this year. It was considered both by the Douglas County Bicycle Advisory Committee as well as the Traffic Safety Commission, and the proposed language was well-received by both. Currently, there has been an increase, as noticed by the Lawrence Police Department, of vehicles parking in marked bicycle lanes. Sometimes the bicycle lanes don't have signage posted, but there are markings. And so the applicable stat, ordinance for this, the standard traffic ordinance would be Section 12, which applies because it requires people to obey official traffic devices, which is defined as not only signage but also marking. So it does technically fit, but for sake of clarity, staff recommends having this proposed ordinance, which is much more on point. And I'd also like to add that David Woosley and Captain Stephen Zarnowick are here if there are any questions about the specific need of this ordinance.
Questions? Okay, so, help me out here. There won't be signage? We're just expected to know that you can't park there, right?
No, currently, there are, there is at least marking on the street
Right.
that says parking. In some troublesome spots, we might consider putting up signage, but
Okay.
right now, in a lot of places, there's just what's marked on the street.
But this is a bike lane.
Yes.
There's a right-hand and a left-hand strike.
Yes, and so it would be more on point that you can't park in the bike lane.
Anything else? Thank you. Public comment on this item? Any public comment on this item? Okay. So back to the Commission. Do it. Do it. Anything else, then? Would entertain a motion to adopt on first reading ordinance number 9041.
Moved.
Second.
Motion made in second for adoption on first reading made by Commissioner Shum, second by Commissioner Reardon. All in favor of that motion? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes four zero. Next item is to consider authorizing staff to begin negotiations on a scope and fee with the design team of Eldorado Inc. for the Ninth Street Corridor project.
Hello, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. I'm Christina McClellan, the Director of Arts and Culture for the city. As you know, in July, the Lawrence Art Center received an Art Place grant for the Ninth Street Corridor. And following that, in September, an RFQ was released to identify a design team to work on the project. It incorporated public comment from a public meeting in August related to that RFQ. There were six firms that applied to be the design team for the project, and of those six, the committee, the review committee of 13 members chose three to interview. A consensus was reached from that committee to recommend the design team led by Eldorado Inc. that also includes the artist Sam Faison, as well as the civil engineer firm Bartlett and West, Dennis Dommer, Luc Dubois, and Cohen &amp; Partners, and Kelly Kincher for that. So the request today is for staff to be authorized to negotiate a scope of work and fees with that team led by Eldorado Inc., which would then return to the City Commission for final approval.
And that final approval will be in the next several weeks, by December 15th or something?
Yes.
Okay.
That's correct.
Questions?
Hi, can you tell me how the committee was selected?
Sure. And I may ask, Diane started to assist me on that because I came on board sort of midway through that process. Diane, would you like to shed some light on that?
I'd be happy to. The, the team was kind of a core group of people who are typically involved in RFQ committees from the city, that is, several representatives from Public Works. We also had Susan Tate from the Art Center, given that they're actually the recipient of the grant. We had the Dean of the School of Architecture. That was a person that was suggested to include by Ms. Tate. We also had several representatives of the East Lawrence Neighborhood Association that were working on the committee. The, the one representative was recommended by the East Lawrence Neighborhood Association directly. And then the, there was one member who is a board member with East Lawrence, and they were one of our initial contacts on the project for the neighborhood. Then there was a individual, Mike Myers, who served on the committee. And he was a resident of East Lawrence, is a resident of East Lawrence, but also had, in his line of work, particular expertise with working with design firms. So he was someone that we reached out to, to be on the committee as well. Commissioner Shum served on the committee as well. And he had been involved, obviously, in the work of the Cultural District Task Force and a lot of arts-related activities and
Marsha Hill.
Yes, Marsha Hill, a property owner along the corridor. We felt that it was important to have a property owner actually touching the project along the corridor, be part of the committee, too.
We also had John Gant, who is the Dean of Architecture from the, from KU.
So, can I have one more question, please? So, were there any prior concerns about the makeup of the committee previously? Previous to the recent discussions?
Not any that I'm aware of recently. When we were starting to put the committee together, there were concerns expressed to us from residents in East Lawrence about their representation. So that's the reason why there were three representatives of the people that lived in East Lawrence and also the property owner.
Well, also, they asked that an artist be included in the committee, and we did. We, we expanded the committee to include
Dave Blonstein.
Dave Blonstein, yeah.
And he was also serving at the request of the East Lawrence Neighborhood Association.
Were these open meetings?
No.
Any other questions?
We did do something that, I don't recall we've done in a consultant selection process, which was have the consultant make a presentation to interested stakeholders before it came to the Commission. So, unique in a project. So, that was open to the meetings as far as deliberations.
And, and in advance of that, I would also add, we did have a, a meeting related to the request for qualifications. It was in draft form, and we had a meeting to talk about it and take input before that was finalized to go out to, in our, in our regular process of soliciting firms.
Okay, so, can you give me a little bit of idea of what all is going to be talked about in the scope of the services here?
The, in the, the, the project is related to the design of Ninth Street. Basically, the, the parameters of the project are Massachusetts to Delaware in that corridor. Exactly what the project will be, it will be up to the, the process here, working with neighbors and stakeholders and having that design come before you all. But in the contract that we'll be having with the design firm, we will be working with them on setting out what the public engagement process would be, which is a very important component of the project, as well as their, you know, their professional scope of services with their team and what we're expecting there. They have a broad team, and one of the unique parts of this project is the, the fact that there is an Art Place grant that was received by the Art Center for the project. And that does provide funding for some kind of art component and integrated art component into the infrastructure of the project. Exactly what that is, is going to be part of the design process and, but one of the things that'll be specified in the contract is the, the consultant's services regarding selecting any additional artwork or working with any other artists that might be relevant to the project kind of as that process unfolds. So it'll be, it'll be pretty traditional scope of what our regular infrastructure projects would be with the, you know, added emphasis on public engagement and then the, the fact that we have this Art Place grant involved.
And as we look at the public engagement process or a portion of this, is there anything that we can do in the requirements of meetings or numbers of meetings, those kind of things to be able to figure into the fee?
Yes, definitely. And one of the things that we would like to talk with the consulting team about is putting together, you know, at the front end of the project, a, a very good schedule of meetings and, and perhaps topics that would be discussed at those meetings so that we could have at the front end of the project, publicizing those meeting dates and the topics so that anyone who is interested in being engaged would have an opportunity to attend.
Okay. Well, one of the things that I've thought has been important in all this is that we were trying to do something that was going to be, you know, a very good project, you know, the Ninth Street Corridor, but the one thing that was important, especially to me, and I'm sure the rest of the Commission members, is that, you know, we don't end up somehow dividing, you know, East Lawrence into two and, and those kind of things. So I want to make sure that the process, you know, that the public has adequate process to be able to meet with the design team and make sure that their, you know, feelings are heard, so.
Yes, and, and we believe that's very important, too. There's a couple things that we have already set up that I thought I would mention with regard to engaging the public and encouraging a communication channel on this project, and that is, we have a Ninth Street Corridor project portion that's been set up on the city's website. There is an email list, and I know there's a number of people that are already signed up for that. We've been encouraging that since that very first RFQ meeting so that we can keep people tuned in to what's happening with the project and, and making sure that they're aware of meetings and, and the steps of things. We also did talk quite a bit with the leadership of the East Lawrence Neighborhood Association, and they kind of gave us two liaisons that will be, we, kind of our point of contact, mine and Christina's, on the project as far as helping us get information to their membership as well.
Okay. Any questions, the staff? Okay. Thank you. Public comment? If we could have, again, your name and, again, we've got about three minutes.
Absolutely. Thank you. Mayor, Commissioners, my name is Nicholas Ward, and I address you tonight as a community-based artist that has done work, often with small communities in numerous locations throughout the Midwest, as a leader and facilitator in often large-scale, community-inclusive art projects, and as a longtime student of civically engaged arts. I'm able to speak to what is termed best practices when engaging with a specific community or members of a community in relation to a project like the proposed Free State Boulevard. Before grant applications, before securing outside funding, or establishing large-scale plans, it is absolutely necessary and vital to first engage with a potential project's host neighborhood in a manner that promotes full partnership and self-determination of those most important stakeholders, which are, without exception, in this case, the East Lawrence Neighborhood residents. Once that has been accomplished, and only then, may there be a successful and mutually beneficial process moving forward. This particular project, I'm afraid, has begun with the cart before the horse. All of the answers, the who, the what, the where, and the when, are being provided to the neighborhood, while vital questions have not been asked. So I must ask at this time, why or why not go forward with tonight's motion? Tonight we have before us an opportunity to set things straight. To begin this process, I present a set of concerns and requests set forth by the East Ninth Street Ad-Hoc Committee, which is made up of artists and members of the East Lawrence Neighborhood. The concerns were expressed as follows. A transparency of process is a concern. Hidden agenda potentially. Conflict of interest in the RFQ process. Displacement of neighborhood residents and businesses. Gentrification. Downtown invasion of the East Lawrence Neighborhood. Rebranding of the East Lawrence Neighborhood. Traffic. Noise. Outsiders making decisions for the neighborhood, and a loss of control or self-determination by the neighborhood. Demands that would potentially ease these concerns are as follows. Transparency, including making the full Art Place proposal available. This has happened, and this was very, very much the first step in a healthy process. But transparency also includes ensuring that all plans at all steps go through the Cultural Arts Commission and Historic Resources Commission processes. Full participation as a project partner. This is another request. Including making decisions about meeting times, places, and agendas. Being a full partner doesn't mean being handed information once decided it's being a part of making those decisions. Having power in the process and developing and putting forward plans. Having power in the process and developing and putting forward plans. Having the power to extend processes if plans are not suitable. Having two East Lawrence residents to be chosen by the ELNA board hired as paid members of the design team going forward with this process would ensure that some of those concerns were met. At this time, I ask you, Mayor and Commissioners, to consider postponing a decision on tonight's vote regarding Eldorado until some of these concerns are met. Thanks.
Thank you. Other comment?
Mayor, Commissioners, my name is Artist Ramberg. In 1992, I was the founder and director of an ad hoc arts event called Harvest of Arts that included poetry, theater, dance, artwork in the storefronts throughout the Riverfront Mall and the like. I, at the time, was saying, I want the words Lawrence and Florence to be interchangeable in people's minds. So I do believe that there is a lot in our community to make us very pleased to go forward in a way that is full of creative expression. I was part of the East Lawrence, the Preservation Alliance Board when we made Rhode Island Street a historic district because we wanted our city to be very thoughtful as it came into our neighborhood. And I've lived in our neighborhood for very close to 40 years, and we have fought a highway that would divide us, and it did not go through. And I was on a committee, I was president of the organization, when we gave the first, I believe, grant request for the railroad station. I wanted it improved. I'm very pleased to see that it has been done so. But as I read this proposal that was brought forth, I think about the lovely people who have made this proposal even happen. I met Susan Tate, for instance, as she and I, along with many others, were fighting neighborhood school closings. And I was very impressed with her, her brain, and her, her caring for the community. When she became director of the art center, I was delighted and thought she was perfect. However, I believe that if Ninth Street was mere houses from her home, she would also go, now, what exactly is going to happen here? And I have been, now, this is my 10th meeting, and I'm not being paid, to just pay attention because all of us, I believe, know that when commercial development and quote-unquote "developers" come into a neighborhood that is, is that my time?
Yeah, so just finish up.
That the art, art people who have been there and the neighborhood feels threatened, and we just want to be sure that very, very much care is taken as this process develops us. Thank you.
Thanks, Artist. Other comment?
Commissioners, I'm Tom Carmody, president of the board of the Lawrence Art Center. The Board of Directors of the Lawrence Art Center supports the process that allowed us to obtain a $500,000 grant and provide the funds to the city for public art and design in the Ninth Street corridor project. We've gone to great lengths to work with all potential stakeholders in the project and have taken the unusual step of making one of our grant applications public in the hope of providing even greater transparency. This is usually not done in the nonprofit, highly competitive grant-writing process. We support the selection by the city-appointed committee under an open competitive process of Eldorado. However, we would have supported any of the firms ultimately selected by the committee. We do believe Eldorado's open public presentation last week confirms that the city-appointed committee made an excellent choice among the six firms competing for the project. We recommend that the city enter into negotiations with them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, city manager, and other city staff. I'm Godfrey Beardshire. I'm a lifelong artist. My wife and I have been resident homeowners inside the 200-foot stakeholder zone of the East Ninth Street project for the last 25 years. When we came to Lawrence, we chose East Lawrence to make our home. About six weeks ago, I read a brief statement at a meeting at New York School in which I cited that with openness, honesty, and respect, we could, as a community, create an original model for this type of activity. Unfortunately, up to this point, the process, I have not observed these three qualities. Instead, every step in the entire process has appeared to conform to a predetermined agenda, where all the outcomes could have been identified or predicted months, if not years ago. Where is the openness, honesty, and respect in this whole process so far? I just haven't seen it. We keep hearing that all that will kick in at the next phase, and neighborhood concerns will be addressed. This project, including any hiring of contractors, should not go forward until real transparency and full neighborhood participation have been achieved in the whole thing. It just can't go forward like it is.
Thanks.
Commissioners, Mayor, my name is Amber Hanson. And with great respect for the art center and all that they do, I do have concerns about the project and as it's moving forward. I would like to express concerns I have about the recently released Art Place project proposal and its relationship to the RFQ process. The memorandum included in last night's, included in last night's release of the full project proposal for the Free State Boulevard, which stated, and I quote, "Information about the potential design team and artists were listed as placeholders, for example, possible vendors, who would demonstrate the quality of possible work, a common practice in writing grant proposals." Looking through the proposal, the words "still to be appointed" are, in fact, utilized as placeholders in the proposal phrase, but not only for one of the eight project leaders stated in the grant proposal. This shows that although there was applied use of placeholder within the application, it was not for Eldorado, San Faison, Luc de Bois, Shane Lopez, or the remaining four project leaders submitted. It was specifically and only utilized for the position of the Director of Arts and Culture. Additional questions I have are, why was the full proposal released now, right before the commission is scheduled to vote? Why was there an RFQ process to hire a firm that was written into the proposal multiple times? If the full proposal had been shared with the city earlier, would they have gone forward with the RFQ process? For this reason, and for many concerns I have for this project, I'm asking you to postpone your decision and to consider reopening the RFQ. Thank you.
Other comment?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners, my name is Katie Walsh. I just wanted to say I'm so grateful that we now have the final application, so we know what we're talking about, finally. So thank you to everyone involved on releasing it. I have written a lot of arts grants, and everybody pours through the grants. There's a wonderful foundation center at our public library where you can look at all kinds of grant applications from all across the world, and completed grant applications, and who's giving money, who's not, for what. My experience is that it's easy to read full grant applications, and so the idea that perhaps Art Place is the exception, but I just don't quite buy that, so that's one thing. I also am wondering, all the other communities, and I don't know if there's 18 or 19 around the US that have Art Place grants now, are we really the only town that wanted to see the full application? I would be surprised. I also need to request 30 paper copies of the full application. There are six families in the 800 block of New York Street who do not have computers. There's a 90-year-old woman on New Jersey who asked me to get her one. She wants to read it. We need to fan them out so everyone can have time to read them and understand what's going on. It's only been 24 hours since this came out. It's a lot to read and absorb, and so I am asking that we slow down, let everybody read it, let everybody ask questions and get them answered, and then we can move forward. I have just a few other questions. I hope I didn't make the limit. With all due respect, Commissioner Shum, were you able to see the full application? You don't have to answer now. Did you know that Eldorado, Luc de Bois, and San Faison were already named as project leaders? I also wonder who else knew? Did the art center board already know that? And yet, the community didn't? Did the city staff know that? These are questions that we need to have answered. I also wonder, the other applicant firms that applied, if they had been able to see the full proposal and not placeholders, but Eldorado as the people that would be hired, and I'm quoting from the document, would they have even applied, knowing what a foot in the door Eldorado already had? How would the full proposal had affected the evaluation of firms by the RFQ committee? And I think that's all I have, but those are my questions, and I really hope to get them answered. And I really hope you don't vote on this tonight and give the community a little bit of time. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Tony Kresnik. I'm a developer in the Warehouse Arts District. I've not read the full proposal myself, nor have, nor was I on the selection committee. I guess one question that I have, and obviously, I think this is very positive, as is the 26 letters from artists and local stakeholders, but my question is, you know, we keep harping on the wishes of the Lawrence Art Center or a group that they thought would be qualified. I'm still confused as to what that has to do with the 15-person selection committee. Again, the Warehouse Arts District, which is the book into this project, did not have anybody on that committee, but it looks like the committee itself was not only represented, but retooled to overly represent members of the East Lawrence Neighborhood Association. And that's just a question that I have. What does the Art Place application, and thank goodness they, you know, received the grant, but what does that application have to do with what I was told was a very objective committee that ended up selecting a couple of people that were mentioned in the Art Place grant, and here, as I can tell, the vast majority of the people on the team were not mentioned, including but not limited to Dennis Domer. So that's, that's a question that I have from somebody that has not read the full application. Thank you.
Thanks.
Hello, Mayor and Commissioners, my name is Sarah Mingus. I'm an ELNA board member, and I also operate a small business on Mass Street. And I've been very involved in this project. I really love living in East Lawrence. And I just received a copy of the full application a few hours ago, and I really just wanted to ask for you to give us some time to review that and to get our questions answered, so that way we can move on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Janet Goode. I live in East Lawrence and have for many years. And I'm here to take the long view of your part of this process and how East Lawrence kind of comes from a place where there's a credibility gap. Artists mentioned the highway that was stopped. I've met some lovely people who grew up where the Warehouse Arts District is now, who were in a neighborhood that was bulldozed. And, you know, there's, there's a history of distrust and a feeling that you, that people would like to gentrify us out of existence. I read in the grant proposal that we're an under-invested neighborhood, and I think you would be hard-pressed to find a more invested-in neighborhood if you were going by the passion of the people who live there and the love that they have for that neighborhood. And as something that you can do going forward to address the concerns of the neighbors, gentrification is the thing that I hear over and over and over again, with good reason, from the vast majority of the people who are paying attention to this process, getting caught up to this process. Not everybody has internet. Not everybody can make it to meetings. You know, we put a lot of time and energy into the historic preservation of the neighborhood. We knocked on doors. We worked with Dennis Domer, who is working with Eldorado, to put together proposals to put homes in the neighborhood on the historic register. I think they're sitting on a desk somewhere. I've not seen those moving forward for years now. I get the sense that's not important to anybody but East Lawrence. It's vitally important to us. The downzoning of swaths of the neighborhood, back to the residential family zoning that it should be, that it never has been, those are concerns that could address some of this gentrification panic that people have, with good reason, you know? I just, I take a long view of this, and the city can work with the neighborhood and address some of those concerns and make this process feel like, yeah, you, you care about what we, as a neighborhood, care about, which is the people who live here and the history behind it. That's all I've got to say.
Thanks, Janet. Okay, other comment? No.
My name is John Gascon. I'm a resident at 941 Pennsylvania Street, less than a block away from this project. I'm writing to follow up on a letter I sent to you, Mr. Amix, with additional support from over 23 and counting, as I, as I sit here, people are watching and texting me. 23 neighborhood residents who support this project. I want to reiterate that we believe that this is a tremendous opportunity to have our neighborhood turn into something better for our children and future generations. I currently serve on the Horizon 2020 Steering Committee, the Board of Zoning Appeals, and the Board of North Topeka Arts District. In my past, I've worked as an architect and an artist, founded an artist community, served as president of a center of contemporary art. In addition, I've consulted with the Low Income Housing Institute in Seattle for several years. I'm very aware of the typical grant-writing process and the important relationship between nonprofit groups, city governments, and community stakeholders. It is extremely uncommon to divulge details of grant applications from private nonprofit organizations. Transparency of process far exceeds my professional expectations, and I'm thrilled to support this project going forward. I do not agree that ELNA or the Ninth Street Corridor Ad-Hoc Committee adequately represent the diverse viewpoints of East Lawrence residents, as many members of their leadership have explicitly expressed a no-growth, no-change agenda for East Lawrence, and therefore, I encourage you to exercise your best judgment to move forward with this project. As a board member of the North Topeka Arts District, I find it amusing because I can't, I can confidently say that not a soul would discourage a project of this caliber in Topeka. Please do not waste this tremendous effort put forth by the Lawrence Art Center and all of the participants so far and move forward with this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comment? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Mayor and City Commissioner, I'm Jackie Becker, and I was one of the people from the East Lawrence Neighborhood Association who was selected to be part of the team that selected Eldorado. And I'd like to say that it was an honor to be selected on that. I've been active in the cultural board, that was part of the people that led to selecting Christina to be the cultural director in our city, and I think we've been moving forward on this process for quite a while on the east side. I think that Eldorado, hands down, distinguished themselves above every other group that was interviewed. I feel when they came forth on Tuesday, last Tuesday here in this room, they were able to... to answer a lot of questions. I think they're thoughtful. I think they have taken into consideration the partnership that needs to be required to make this happen on Ninth Street, which is engaging an equal partnership of the East Lawrence Neighborhood and all of its residents, and I feel confident that El Dorado will do that. I'm impressed by the group of people that they've put together. I truly believe that they will absolutely involve people of the East Side, artists and workers, to get involved in this Ninth Street project, and I fully support that we should move forward with El Dorado on this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm KH, otherwise known as Catherine Harris when I have to be official, but I am an East Lawrence neighbor. I live a half-block from Ninth Street, and I'm also on the East Lawrence Board. I have, I don't have the number of, I didn't think to count the number of neighbors I've talked to in my neighborhood that also have concerns like I do. But, you know, I think the neighborhood has been really clear and saying early and often that we don't want outside ideas plopped onto our neighborhood, and we've been assured that East Lawrence would be full partners in this process. But suddenly, the grant comes out and is released, and wow, this is my lame attempt at a joke, but Nostradamus would be really proud at how clearly that grant application is predicting what has been happening. I've lived in East Lawrence long enough to be cynical about processes and how clear they and open they always are. I want to be clear that East Lawrence has never said we're opposed to the project, and personally, I'm not opposed to El Dorado. I think that they're innocent bystanders in this process. But what I'm questioning is the process of how this happened. San Fran Kong came to the Lawrence Arts Center two years ago and made a presentation, and they're part of this grant. It's like there's some things that have been working their way and percolating their way through that was outside of the public presentation and process. So I just, not that I'm opposed to El Dorado or that I'm opposed to the project, but I hope that the city takes a moment to say, let's step back and get some questions answered. And one question I have is, how did public works or the city know how to budget money for the street infrastructure without reading the full grant?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kate. Other comments? Anyone else?
Mayor and Commissioners, my name is Sarah Bishop, and I am the Director of Grants and Special Projects at the Lawrence Arts Center. The Lawrence Arts Center, its CEO Susan Tate, its staff, and the members of the Board are all unflinchingly committed to providing the best resources to the Lawrence community, including all of the many artists, residents, children, and businesses in East Lawrence. We are pleased to see that the 15-person selection committee chose a talented urban design team, as demonstrated by El Dorado's presentation here last week, and we are excited for this project, which has been a, which has, up until now, been a private grant between a private 501(c)(3) and a private foundation. We're excited to see this project become the open, public, art-centered project it was always meant to be. I hope you'll move forward with this action. Thank you.
Thanks.
Hello, Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Ashley Laird. I'm a working artist in Lawrence. I'm an East Lawrence resident, as well as have a studio space at 411 East Ninth Street. This project is greatly going to affect my livelihood, I believe. Given what we know now about the application, it's apparent that there was manipulation of the selection process for the design firm and the both hiding of extremely important information from the public, especially from East Lawrence residents, from the city, who was coordinated and hosted the RFQ process, and perhaps from Art Place, also the committee of people who were asked to recommend the proposal, not already knowing that there was an indicative preference for that. So it seems as there were many conflicts of interest that were not revealed. So given what we know now about the application, I don't understand how we can go through with your vote on this tonight, and so I'm asking you to please not vote on this tonight. And I don't know how we can move forward with confidence or trust in this process also, knowing what we know now. Thank you.
Other comment?
I'm Erin Payton. I'm President of the East Lawrence Neighborhood Association, and on this issue that you guys are actually looking at tonight, we haven't had a board discussion, official discussion, so I'm speaking as myself. I like probably best what Nick said in his very beginning, which is, an ideal process is that we, if we could go back in time and restart this, we would restart by doing that stakeholder process in the get-go. That said, you know, coming to where we are now and trying to build the trust that is necessary for this process to go forward, in my, in my part, in my role in doing the East Lawrence Neighborhood Association President role, I have been in discussions with Susan Tate and Ben Alvers about the information that the neighbors would like to have. And this information came out because she, you know, there was an interest in having full disclosure of building that trust. And I, I would like it to be seen that way and not as a, you know, that, I don't find anything that I found in this to be something I didn't expect or something scary or something unusual in a grant proposal. I think there are people who have different ideas of what that grant proposal process would be in different situations, and I think there's different, because it's a public, not non-public, it's a private grant, private institution, there are different standards than if you're going for an NEA grant and that kind of thing. So I'm getting around to the, I see that the act was in an interest of creating trust. And I, I see that whatever we can do to build that trust further, and I don't know what the answer is, I think that's what's important in this process. What I've heard from my neighbors is, wait a little bit, and I'm not sure why to wait, honestly. I've been, I asked, and I was told by KT at least, that I have a whole list of questions to ask. And I know that Susan has said to me that she would be willing to meet with the neighborhood to answer any questions about the grant proposal. I myself have had the pleasure of getting to meet with Josh Shelton, who heads El Dorado Architects, and I, I wasn't part of a selection committee, but I also feel pretty strongly that I think they will do an excellent job. I think they've drawn up an excellent team. I'm excited about the process and the chance to work on this, as are my neighbors who have expressed a lot of concern. I don't think any, I don't think anybody has actually said, let's not do this. I think what people have said is, let's do this, but we, we're scared. We're scared because it doesn't seem like a process that included us from the beginning.
Okay. Thanks, Erin. Other comment? Any other comment?
Mary Amix, Commissioners, my name is Mike Logan. I served on the Cultural District Task Force with a number of city officials, East Lawrence Neighborhood Representation. East Lawrence held a majority of the seats on the Cultural District Task Force, and we brought a recommendation to you in December, and one of the key tenets of that recommendation was that the hiring of a Director of Arts and Culture, but also some specific plans or recommendations to improve the Ninth Street Corridor. I believe that, you know, some of the baseline components of what the improvements in the Ninth Street Corridor, we're talking shared-use pathways, ADA-accessible sidewalks, low-level lighting, things of those nature are just key components to any neighborhood situation. I want to say that I came to the presentation by El Dorado last Thursday, and I was thoroughly impressed with their explicit statements to the audience of pure transparency and wanting to give all stakeholders an equal opportunity to have a voice, and I do believe that they will service that capacity. So I would, I would, in my capacity, just ask that you move forward with the recommendation.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comment?
I'm Josh Shelton, Principal with El Dorado Architects, and, you know, I just, I just wanted to, to reflect a continued level of transparency. We did, we did list in our qualifications to RFQ that we had advised the Arts Center for various grant applications. That holds true. Actually, with the release of the grant, it was, it was the first time that I got to see the final draft as well, but I can tell you, just to clarify the issue of conflict of interest, we put together a different team to respond to the RFQ than was listed in the Art Place application grant, and I think it could have been highly possible for one team to work on behalf of the Art Place grant and another team to work on behalf of the actual engineering and technical execution of the design. So the RFQ that came out was really focusing the lion's share on being able to integrate the intent of the Art Place grant into a technical resolution. If you look at the Art Place grant, I think there was like $450,000 out of the $500 that was to be reserved for art commissions and administration of art. So there really were sort of different scopes at play, and for me, I had to personally rethink the team altogether. So Bartlet and West was brought on as a civil engineer. They'll do a lion's share of the work as a local contractor here on the design side. And also, Coen Partners, an urban landscape firm, I thought would be appropriate to bring on to handle kind of larger-scale visioning for landscaping strategies. They were, they were never in the Art Place grant, so I just wanted to be clear about the delineation there. I also, I also wanted to say that I'm ready to get to work with everybody. You know, there's, I've, I've been part of a conversation now with, with members from lots of the stakeholder groups. I've done personal outreach with lots. El Dorado is ready to get to work, and I think that when we can and when we're able to, I think we'll be able to address a lot of, a lot of concerns in a very open process. So we're very excited to do that. I mentioned in the presentation, I'm a two-time Lawrence resident and a two-time Kansas City resident, so I've gone back and forth. Actually, Mike used to cut my hair for a few years while I was here in Lawrence.
There's the conflict.
The conflict of interest.
I knew there was some somewhere. I couldn't find one yet, but there it is.
Yeah, but I, but I just, I just want to say, Lawrence, Lawrence and East Lawrence are very near and dear to me, and a lot of this is, I'm really ready just to roll my sleeves up and get to work with my partner David Dowell and our team that we've put together, so I just wanted to make that clear. Thank you.
Thanks, John.
A couple of questions. Have you been involved with situations such as this where some of the residents are worried about changes in their living patterns and where the, and the housing and the area that would be changed in a negative way in their view with something like this? Have you ever?
We've done four projects that are similar to this, and in every case, this is, this is the situation. Actually, I live in the, in the West Side neighborhood of Kansas City that is entrenched in, in these very issues about growth and gentrification. There's a large Hispanic neighborhood in the West Side. There, there, there continues to be a very mixed diversity in ethnicity and economic classes in the West Side. And so we recently did a, a, a streetscaping project where all of those issues came to the forefront, and, you know, the strategy was very simple. We, when we had stakeholder meetings, we literally didn't leave the room until we reached some kind of consensus about our next steps, and sometimes the opinions were diverse enough that we had to, to scale back even what the consensus was to get to the next step, but we ran nonetheless an efficient process and we got to where we needed to get. I live in that neighborhood. I just built a house in that neighborhood. The stakeholders that range from, from very grassroots to very business-oriented are all my friends in that neighborhood. So, yeah, I've worked on these in a very personal way. We've also worked on them in the Crossroads District, where that's, that's another neighborhood in Kansas City that's been transitional over the last 10 years from what was kind of an artist, artist-occupied urban area to now transitioning to small creative businesses and certainly gentrification. And there have been a lot of strategies that have been put in place in the Crossroads to help working artists remain there, and there's been, you know, some tax, tax policies that have been passed to help that. So, yeah, we've been part of all these conversations in Kansas City and our public work there.
Other questions? Okay. Thanks, John.
Thank you.
Other public comment? Last chance. Okay. Thank you all. Back to the Commission.
I answered that question.
Sure.
I think that's kind of key. The question that was posed, did I have prior knowledge to the Art Place grant that was submitted? And the answer is no. About an hour ago was the first time I read it. I don't, I can't speak for the other members of the selection committee. I did think the selection committee did operate in a very fair and open manner. I thought there was, in the end, in fact, there were two firms that were, El Dorado was marked up as being first, but the other firm had a significant amount of marks that would have allowed it to be considered as a consulting group that could do the job had El Dorado not accepted or they're not accepted. So, you know, there was good competition, there was good discussion. I don't think anybody had any bias. We listened to the top. Well, first of all, there were six firms selected. We pulled out to three, and then three were given hour-and-a-half interviews in which we all asked questions and made presentations, so I had no preconceived idea of what was in the, in that grant application, so that's my position.
Okay. Other comments? Questions?
Yeah, I've got a lot of questions.
Please.
Is Susan here tonight?
No.
Okay. Can you come back up? What was your name again, the grant writer from the?
Sir.
Can I ask her to come up?
Sir, yeah, please.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Sarah Bishop.
Hi, sorry. You don't have to bend over. It looks very uncomfortable. Just move the microphone up.
Okay.
There you go. Being tall is a liability.
Okay.
Okay, so there's been some things brought up, and I think
Sure.
many people have made many allegations this evening about transparency, hidden agendas, you know, the lack of forthcoming information, and I appreciate and respect their concerns. If I had been, you know, treated or mistreated in the past, I might feel very sensitive to anybody messing with my neighborhood, so
Absolutely.
I mean, there's a, there's a clear mistrust, I guess would be the general term, because I still haven't heard a specific reason why we want to stop other than we need to stop and take a breath, which I respect, but I want to get some questions answered, and I really would rather not leave here tonight unless we can get these answers, questions and then the answers, because delaying this seems reasonable, as long as there's reasonable questions that need answers.
Yeah.
What was the intent of using El Dorado, El Dorado's name in this document? And are they the leaders in this, in this area? Are they, because they're a local business, because, what is the reason for using a placeholder? And specifically, someone brought up that placeholders were used in some cases and others they were not.
Sure.
I understand this is your private entity, your documents are yours and your work product and need to be respected as such. I also respect the fact you released those documents, but I need to know and understand why you used El Dorado's name in this document.
Okay. Well, to apply for an Art Place grant, you have to submit work samples created by an artist. You have to name an artist, you have to submit photographs of their work. So in order to do that, you have to have a specific artist that you have to mention. But it's very common for these artists to just be an example of the artist, the caliber of artists that you would include in the project. And I am very, very confident that Art Place would not have taken back their money had we chosen or had the selection committee chosen a different urban design team. They understand that this is something that's shifting, that's changing, that this is something where there needs to be public selection and a public selection committee. And so, you know, we put in an exemplary team in order to get the grant. But I think that there's plenty of opportunity to change that and that that's something that Art Place is fine with.
Have you written other grants of this nature?
I have, yes.
Have you used placeholder or used exact names in that instance before?
It's almost always required. You almost always have to submit work samples, especially for large grants. So the Lawrence Art Center's NEAR Town Grant, for example, we submit work samples with that. You know, all large grants that are in the arts really require work samples. They want to see, they want to get a sense of what you're trying to do. And it's really hard to do that if you don't have the artist picked out, you don't know what the artist is going to look like. But it's still, it's just an example of the caliber of art, right? The type of art, the caliber of art. It's not a specific requirement that you use that team in the future.
So why did you use El Dorado as the name to put in that spot?
Well, we think that they're a wonderful design team and we love that their work. So they've received a lot of awards, they're very well known, both regionally and nationally. And so we thought that they were a good example of the kind, and the caliber of artists that we would want to bring here to do the work on Eighth Street.
Okay, so by using their name, do you think that influenced the decision-making process of the grant providers? Or is it a, can you make me understand what value El Dorado added to the receipt using their name? I presume you asked them if you could use their name in the preparation of this document?
We did speak with them about using their name in the preparation of the document.
And their, and their design examples? You said you had to submit samples?
And some work samples, some photographs of some of their work. But obviously, right, this is work that they've done in other locations, it's not going to be the work that they're doing here. So again, I would say the value is that they are a specific group that we were able to reach out to. And since it's required to have a specific name, specific work samples, it's, we wouldn't have had a chance of getting the grant if we didn't do that. And I think we were really, ideally, of course, we would have had more of a public selection process going into the grant and really would have had time to, you know, develop the grant collaboratively, engage stakeholders in the grant drafting process. Unfortunately, it's the nature of grants that they often move very quickly. So you don't always have time to do that. And I think that the Lawrence Art Center chose to bring these resources to the community, even in the, in the, this instance in which they didn't have the perfect proposal drafting process.
Okay. And then do you believe that the other members of the committee were aware of the use of or were others, who, who all had access to this grant prior to the selection process? Once, meaning the application itself?
That's, I'm not sure. That's a good question.
Was it a widely disseminated document?
I don't believe so. I think, you know, probably very few people had it. I would say Susan Tate had it, I had it.
And I had it.
Ben, Ben had it. You know, probably some staff members at the Lawrence Art Center. It'd be hard, I would say a lot of, I would imagine a lot of stakeholders saw parts of the document. I don't know who would have seen the full final draft.
Would you not consider Bob Shoma stakeholder?
Um, well, yes, I would consider Bob Shoma stakeholder.
But he didn't see a copy of it. He didn't see a free.
He probably didn't see a copy of the final draft.
Okay, all right. I guess I'm trying to figure out what, what went wrong here. Okay, so the last question I have is.
Mike, just follow.
Yeah.
Do you know if any other members of the selection committee had, had the advantage or the knowledge of that, that original application?
I don't think so, no. I would say only Susan Tate would have had the knowledge of the draft, yeah.
Nice.
Okay. So the selection, the use of the various names in this document, for example, I didn't hear anyone object to the use of the name Free State Boulevard?
Well, there has been objection to that.
Oh, I didn't, no. But I didn't hear it tonight.
Yeah.
There was plenty of objections, but not a single person.
Cross that out and put Ninth Street in. Where?
Of course, we've taken that out. So that's a good example of.
I guess I'm trying to use an example for me when I read that. I said, well, I don't know if I like that name or not.
Right.
But I'm certainly not going to consider you doing something incorrectly or improperly because you stuck a name in there that needed to be utilized.
And I think.
I guess my question is, this is all, this is all interchangeable and, you know, if the public, once it gets to this process, now that we have this grant and this money, you would be open to changing the name of the street, right?
Absolutely.
Literally, we would have to agree with that.
I think we've been referring to it as the Ninth Street Quarter, not Free State Boulevard anymore.
But it's in there.
It is in there.
Many, many times.
That is.
More times than El Dorado, I count.
You are so right, Commissioner Dever. You are right.
Okay.
And I would just say that yes, it's a perfect example of how, you know, sometimes we put things in the grant in order to try to get the grant and track the grant, but there is flexibility once you get the grant to change the project and change the style.
Amen.
So very good.
Okay, thank you. You made my point, I appreciate it. So I, I guess I just wanted to make sure I understood who knew about this. And there's been some really serious allegations here tonight and it kind of troubles me about, you know, somebody questions, I mean, I get that this is a little bit unusual, but that's what happens when a private entity comes to the public and has money and has to then go through the process of the public. My last question is, what part of the grant is going to be used for the design team?
I would say very little of the grant would be used by the design team in terms of implementing the design. Really, the grant did not talk at all about what the design would look like. It talked more about the process and hoping to get to that public process. So you know, it talks about having lots of meetings, the way in which we might engage artists through an RFQ process, something like that. But it really doesn't talk about what the final visual look of the project would be at all.
But the $500,000 grant, will any of those funds that you used, that you received by the submission of this grant, will any of those dollars be used for the action we're being asked to go out and interview the potential design firm? Are, are your funds that are created, were generated by the Art Place, I'd like to know if anyone knows, are they going to be used for the payment of the design team?
I don't, Diane, do you have a sense of that?
It's our understanding that, in, in talking with Ms. Tate, that I believe it was about $50,000 that she had visited about that would be available from the grant funds for, toward the contribution of the design work in that contract.
Okay, great.
And I think she had mentioned $350,000 or so would be the art component. They're, you know, they're, they are the holders of that money at this point though.
That's the private entity that has the $500,000. I guess I wasn't clear, never said in any of these documents if any of those funds were going to be funneled into this, this next, next step with simply the, the selection and the design. I, I guess I want to make sure I understood that. Because it doesn't say it anywhere that I can see.
Just to clarify, we had entered in a formal agreement with the Art Center, we've got to do one of the things that we need to do as this proceeds as well.
Okay. Sorry for that.
If I'm not mistaken, right now the grant funds sit in the Art Center's bank account.
They're all with the city, I know where that's from.
Correct.
So, you know, you've got to remember, you had a private enterprise or a private organization, not private, but a not-for-profit organization, interact with a private funding group and they were successful in receiving this, this grant. And they're going to give the grant to the city to help us define and build Ninth Street. So it's, you've got a lot of private parties in there that now it's maturing to the public sector. So it's a little bit different than what we're used to seeing.
Right. That's a great point, maturing to the public entity, which I think that's where, I think this is kind of.
That's where the change is, that's where it opens up and transparency has to be 100%.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
Terry, you have any questions?
Well, I, just a comment, I, I would agree with Mike Dever and the fact that there are many allegations that were made that are troublesome because they're unfounded, they're worries. Their concerns may be based on the past and I think we have to pay attention to that. But I think the most important thing is that, that we have a private entity that created a, a situation where we can improve the city. And it, as a private, private entity and being involved with RFQs and things like this in the past, I don't see that they've deviated from anything that I've ever seen in the past. Matter of fact, I think they went out of their way more so than I usually see to get representatives from the community that was represented and will be affected by this. Both people who live there and are, were on the East Lawrence Neighborhood Association, which should naturally represent this. So I think there were significant efforts to be, that were made considering that this has to be a private situation where you put out an RFQ because you, you can't open that up and it has to be done in a, in a, in a closed environment. And everyone I've ever seen has been in a closed environment. I understand their difficulties and worries. At the same time, I think the one thing that, that we can do from the future, and this is why I asked the question, is to make sure that this is transparent now that it is a public document and now that we are doing it in a public way. And I think I've been convinced that that will be the way. And that's what, they have experience in that, they've worked with people who have also had bad experiences in the past and are dedicated as professionals not to let those occur. I do think the fact that this document was released was very unusual and I commend the Art Center for doing that because that's not something they had to do. But when you keep something secret, then people worry that there's something in there that is unusual. And I don't think there is anything unusual in it. But the most important thing to me, the reason I would delay this is not because of the questions, not because of some of the worries and the paranoia that were there that I'm not sure are well-founded on fact, but by past history, but rather this is a document that just came out very, very quickly and in the interest of making sure that we don't rush this, that people can look at the document and if they have specific problems with the document itself, they can come forward and ask them. But I, I would think that a delay just to let people digest this, see what's there, not rush it through so that the citizens of East Lawrence feel comfortable with the process. I don't know that we need to change anything at this point from the commission point of view, because I think everything, everything's been done in the correct way. I think it's been done very professionally and I don't think it's been done to cause any harm to anybody in, in that area. And the gentrification and all the questions that are going to be asked should be mitigated and taken into appropriate consideration by the professional design team. And this will be an open process from this point on. And it hasn't been open because it couldn't be open because of how it was derived. So I feel comfortable with the process. I do think we should allow the people who are involved to have time to digest the, the document. Not that there's anything in there that's bad, I think there's actually probably very good information in there and, and will be helpful to put their worries at, at rest, especially after the discussions that we've had tonight, I hope.
Okay. Let's talk conflict. My street is Free State Lane. I like the name of my street, so there, there would be all kinds of conflict there, just to let that out. No, I'm just kidding. You know, one of, my main concern was here by having the name of the design team listed in, in this application thing, did it have an effect on the membership as they considered, you know, the recommendation? Bob says that nobody had that. Sarah's telling me nobody had that.
Well, I said I didn't.
You didn't have it, okay.
I don't know who else.
We're going to say that it was held there. I guess one of the things that I see is that, that there is concern here. I don't know if there's enough to stop the process, you know, as far as, you know, going through the, oh, trying to design the, what do you call it?
RFQ.
Yeah, the RFQ and, and going this route of the scope and fee of the design team. Dave, based on the comments that we have tonight, can we include certain items again into the scope of, you know, for consideration by the design team here?
Mayor, you can include anything in the scope that you think is appropriate.
Okay.
And we haven't, haven't started work and we don't authorize to do that yet.
Okay, well, if this item is going to be back to us in two weeks, you know, we're going to be able to look at what that scope's going to be and, and the expectations, are there things that we, we need to have happen based on the comments of the neighborhood? Okay? Easy as that.
Bob? You know, I've listened to the conversation tonight and I find it very interesting. And as many of you know, I sat on the cultural task force along with a number of people in the audience tonight. And we spent a lot of time going over a lot of these same issues. We all knew what the intent was. The intent was to get a recommendation to the city commission so that we could hire someone, so that we could go and apply for a grant, maybe be successful and, and work through on Ninth Street. So, you know, the, the idea that this is all a brand new thing, that my gosh, I'm taken by surprise, I'm having a little trouble digesting that one right now. I've been involved in each step of the way, I've seen a fair and impartial manner in which things are, are chosen, things are done. We had an extra person from East Lawrence onto the task force after the task force was appointed because that person asked to be included because they represented a minority viewpoint. And I said, fine, let's do that. And the mayor at the time, I think it was Mike Dever, said, sure, let's do that. Late in the game, not late in the game, but after the committee had been chosen for the selection, East Lawrence asked that another person, an artist, be selected, that they selected, be added to the committee. We said, fine, let's go ahead and do that. So at each, each of those two committees, in my opinion, have been very much overweight, overweighted, not unfairly, but overweighted, East Lawrence residency in terms of trying to maintain their, their values and their interests. So, you know, I don't think that at any point we've ever said we, we don't want to hear, we, we really do want to hear everything they have to say and what their concerns are. So I'm not, really not, if I'm understanding that a number of people are dissatisfied with the way they've been listened to up to this point, it's not, it's not working for me real well, because I think we've done, we've gone out of our way to listen to everybody and to put more people on committees. I think that we can, we can move ahead tonight. I've been to almost every single meeting. I was not able to go to the meeting last Thursday night, but every, every single meeting that's been held, both East Lawrence Neighborhood Association meetings where I've been invited, all the public process meetings, I've really tried to follow this very closely. But I think we can move ahead tonight because we're going to have this come back in a couple of weeks with the scope of services for us to approve. If we find something at that time we don't like, we can stop it right then and there. So I mean, there is a natural breakpoint coming up here. Then in the meantime, it gives everyone who wants to read that, that, the opinion or the grant application that was made public yesterday, gives them plenty of time to read that and they can ask questions at that time when it comes back to us. I see city manager Corliss raising his hand with.
Okay.
When you get to the appropriate point, I, getting the scope back in two weeks, I think is, is way too quick.
Okay.
That means it's got to be done a week from tomorrow in order to put it on the summer second agenda. I don't, I don't think that could happen. And I also think, in fairness to all the interested parties, what we probably want to do is get a, get the, the scope's going to be very important. It's going to say who does what, what level of meetings are we going to have, what's the expectation for the different work items and such. I think you might want to allow that to sit out for public view for a lot longer than posting it on Thursday for a Tuesday meeting. You might want to let it sit out for a little bit longer. I don't think that that slows down this project. We're about ready to go into the holidays where sometimes it's difficult to get some of this stuff done. But if we could, hopefully what I hope, what I hope is that we can get a scope agreed to between the consultants and the city. That's where the contract is. And then we can get it out for at least a couple of weeks and just review. Because if it's just up there over a weekend, I think you might be back having comments about it's getting, it's moving quicker. And I, I just don't see that it's going to be here two weeks from tonight, given that means it's got to be all finalized a week from tomorrow.
No, and I agree, but I guess my point was that there's another step here before we, we sign up and have a formal agreement, a contract signed, that if there's, if there's issues, we can address them at that time. We move this along, but yet there's opportunity to interact at a later date.
Okay. I agree with all of that, Bob. The one thing that, you know, my only suggestion was, are there other things that we would like to have in that scope? Or are we willing to sit back, wait on, on staff to negotiate the, the scope and add things later or take things? things later or take things out depending on what it is after it goes through this public viewing process? Are there any other things?
I'd just like to get the working document presented to us and then we can react to it, either pro or con, add or subtract, as well as the public. So, I mean, there's got to be a starting point on this somewhere. And I'd just see the staff work with the, the contractor, the subcontractor and come up with language that we can react to.
Okay. That all right?
You know, I still, there's some things that were said tonight. I guess I'd wanted to, you know, I think Aaron hit the nail on the head, you know, he, Aaron Payton, you know, who's president of East Lawrence Neighborhood Association, really isn't quite, I mean, he knows that there's some questions and he mentioned KT had him. I'd like her to come forward and maybe give us the questions that she wants answered as of right now. Or, or if there's really a reason, I mean, based on what I'm reading, I want to make sure that we get, before I make a decision, I want to know if there's anything obvious that jumps out other than the answers that Bob gave her. And I, I mean, I tried to write them all down, but she said them so quick I couldn't. But, but since, since Aaron had mentioned that KT asked him to, to delay this, I'd like to know if there's questions that jump out at her that she, that she's read beyond the ones that she asked. I want to make sure that we don't move forward without, if there's that clear problem or a lack of understanding that we, we need to move forward with. So.
Okay.
I don't know if KT, do you have time?
Thank you.
Thanks, Sarah.
It's only been 24 hours. This is just the first questions. And I will read them again, but I think there's an obvious disconnect in the room. We are asking to be full partners. And that means we are up here, you're up here, the Art Center's up here, we work together. The scope, the three of us work together.
Okay.
You know, that's what we're talking about. We're not talking about the Art Center and you talking all this up. We're talking about the three full partners talking it out.
So did Bob say that the majority of the membership, other than city staff, were, were members of East Lawrence of the original?
In, in, you're talking about the cultural?
Yeah.
I don't know if it was a majority.
I'm sorry, the review team that just went out?
I, I didn't.
There were six city staff, weren't there?
I didn't say, I didn't say the majority. Someone said majority.
Yeah, somebody else did.
So the majority were city employees?
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
But I, I didn't say that.
Somebody did. Did you hear somebody said the majority?
I did.
Okay, so.
I did too.
And that was incorrect.
Okay. Majority besides, so non-city mem, not, non-city employees?
Can somebody read me the list? I'm sorry.
That's okay. I, I'm unclear on it and I guess I'm, I've heard different things and I want to make sure. So you, so.
You want the, the list of the people that were on the review committee?
Yeah. Well, one of them was Mike Myers, who we all adore. He's an East Lawrence resident, but he was representing Livewell and, and, you know, you can't portray him as representing the board of East Lawrence. You know what I mean? There's, everybody wears different hats and plays different roles. So I think it's a little bit trying to trip people up by saying, hey, you know, I think that's a rabbit hole that doesn't need to be gone down myself.
I just, I just didn't, I, I've heard different things, KT, and I wasn't a part of any of it. So I want to make sure if we delay this, which you're asking us to do and I want to vote in favor of it, I want a good reason to do so because I don't want to delay something that necessarily, unless there's real good stuff here that we're going to be gained. But just waiting, that's all I've heard, is just wait. That's all I've heard. And that's fine. I'm comfortable with waiting. But I just want to make sure that waiting is going to yield some sort of beneficial result. And as the person who, who the grant person thought was the best and the committee thought was best, he's eager to get started and start dialoguing with you and the neighborhood. I mean, that's what we want to do. So please tell me what I need to know is, is what do you, what's your, after Bob answered the questions, what are your, are there still huge issues out there that we need answered?
There's a couple. For me, Commissioner Reardon, I would not classify the concerns as worries, simple worries. I find it interesting that people didn't hear problems or concerns because people were listing them. And I think, I, it just makes me wonder. Excuse me, we're coming up and we're listing them and then you say we don't have any? That's a little odd. You know, I think it speaks to the idea that the city is doing what they always do and you have ways of doing things and it's great and usually it's pretty wonderful, but we're kind of in lockstep. We're asking you to do something really new. We're asking you to take us on as a third partner. That's really new. It's not done in our culture. It's not done in the U.S. This is new. It's not how the Art Center does things. This is their very first public art, you know, project. They don't have experience with this. We're doing something new. We are willing to be guinea pigs with you on this project, but we must be at the table. We must be helping to write up the scope. It's where we live. So I don't know how to make it any clearer and I'm not a great, you know, I would never be a lawyer, but.
I'm sorry if I put you on the spot. I just want to make sure because we want to wait. I mean, you know, Bob, Terry wants to wait.
We need to wait because it's 24 hours since this big document came out. We've been yearning for it. Now we have it. We need to look at it. We need to look at it from a legal standpoint. We do. We need to look at it from a lot of angles. And I think when people, there's also a disconnect on what some people call deep public engagement. For the Art Place Grant, they require deep public engagement before you read the grant, not after. And over and over on grants that involve East Lawrence from the Art Center, we have heard, you know, grants, you got to get them done, got to get them in there, sorry, short notice for meetings. That doesn't fly. Deep public engagement takes time. It makes you crazy, but you have to do it and then you'll have a better product in the end. No one is against this proj, this project. Most people think it will be awesome if we are the third partner at the table, not giving input, not stakeholders, the third partner. That's why I'm asking you to slow it down.
And how, how is, hold on there, Bob. How would you write something like that, Dave?
I mean, one, one possibility is, is that we don't begin negotiations with, with El Dorado, but we sit down with the neighborhood and we talk about what we think should be in the, in the scope, in the, in the list of requirements. So we're not starting with the consult. We're starting with the neighborhood. We're going to sit down and we're going to talk about those different elements at a, at an appropriate time and an appropriate place. And it'd be, it can be an open meeting.
Needs to be an open meeting.
But, which means that the other people that are interested in it can come.
Absolutely.
If Josh wants to come, that's fine, but the discussion is with the neighborhood about what they think should be in the, the scope. Unless you direct us otherwise, we're going to write a, eventually where it's going to be a contract between the city and El Dorado Architects with all the sub-consultants. And we'll need to have, in my opinion, a separate agreement between the city and the Art Center where we're going to get their money and, and use it for, for the project at an appropriate time. But maybe before we do any of that, we sit down with, with the neighborhood and we start talking about what they think should be in the scope. And then we can report back to the commission. Maybe we can do that in two weeks and not have maybe, just sit down and talk through all about where that is there and then we can see how we want to proceed. That, that's one way to do it. That, that's at least, that's at least a way that gets at the issue of what's going to be in the scope. We, we know how to draft a scope for roadwork. And we've actually got a pretty good boilerplate that we've said, this is what you're going to use. And then it has a, a little bit, and it has all the great things that lawyers, pardon the expression, KT, want to put in the contract. But the rest, but I think that's, that's kind of a given to some extent. I think the real issue, the issue is how are we going to involve stakeholders? How are we going to involve art? And the other thing we really haven't talked about at all is how are we going to involve complete street elements in the project as well, which is, was a very key component when we went through the interviews and we talked about it and is obviously of interest to the, the neighborhood as well. So maybe the, maybe the, the next step is, is to sit down with the, the neighborhood and have a meeting.
And this is why.
That's, that's one way. I'm just going to add that as an opportunity.
And this is why I asked the question. Do we want to do anything, you know, that, do we want to add anything to the scope? And you asked KT to come forward and this is one of the things that we might be looking at in addition to the scope of service that we're expecting.
Yeah, and I just, I want to make sure that you, your question is answered, is how do we have a third team member in this process outside of the, outside of the Art Center, the East Lawrence Neighborhood Association, instead of a stakeholder? How do we make them an equal partner in the process? Both legally, I guess, you know, what, what rights they have to, to determine workmanship and quality and, you know, I mean, the, the, the grant money is clearly pretty much earmarked for art, for the, the majority of it. That's, that's one question that the neighborhood should probably weigh in on. But, I mean, as far as specifications of the road, specifications of the streets and the complete streets design, I mean, we already have decided we abide by those guidelines. I, I want to make sure we can actually do what she said, which is make them a part, the East Lawrence Neighborhood apart, not just the East Lawrence Neighborhood Association, but all neighbors that live in East Lawrence. See, that's what I want to see happen, is everyone, everyone, not just the association, but, but the neighbors, everyone who lives there involved in this process.
We speak, we are the official neighborhood organization and we do speak for the neighborhood. We are the elected representatives.
Okay.
So yes, we want to, but we want to go door-to-door, we want everyone involved. But we are the representative body.
Right.
So.
But I, I've received, you know, I want to make sure, I want to know who's going to be involved in that process. And, and if it's an open meeting, then anyone, any of the Eastern neighborhood can, can come and they're welcome. So, I mean, as long as it's a true representation of the neighborhood and everyone involved, then I want to make sure that, that if we're going to designate them as a, as a partner, that we do, that we determine to do that.
Okay. Yes, sir.
This, this was a discussion at an earlier meeting at, over at New York School. And if, if we are indeed going to get the major partners involved in it, and I'm all for that, I've said that before, then I don't want you to forget Downtown Lawrence. I think they're a very, very strong partner, which needs to be involved in this process as well. And so, you know, if we're going to select and identify partners, I think we have at least five. We have the city, we have the Art Center, we have East Lawrence, we have Downtown, and then the artisans themselves ask to be included as, as a group, artists that don't live in Downtown or in East Lawrence. So, you know, I think you've got strong, five strong partners that if we're going to, if we're going to go that route, I think we should open it up to all these people and let them be involved in this process.
Is it appropriate for me to speak to that?
Sure.
We do not recognize Downtown as a partner. That seems a little silly. It's six blocks out to Delaware and, you know, it doesn't involve Downtown.
Oh, I think it does.
Hold, hold on.
I think it does.
I mean, and, and so that's one of the things we'll have to work out, the three partners. You know, we'll have to sort that out. And there is a big fear that Downtown is trying to creep again and this will become a bar district. You know, we got to talk about this stuff, you know?
Okay.
Perhaps I should sit down. What do you think? Yeah.
I think there'll be a time when, yeah, public comment's over. Okay.
Can I let Aaron speak since he's the president of the East Lawrence Neighborhood Association?
Aaron, come on.
I just, KT used the word "we" in that with the Downtown Association. I, I think that that's inappropriate in the sense that we haven't actually fully discussed that and had like, and East Lawrence Neighborhood Association or neighborhood opinion on that fact. But I think the worry is, is that Downtown is different from the neighborhood and Josh said it so well on Thursday last week, that there is a, there is a change. And he pointed out that we probably, what's going to work in the Downtown area isn't going to be the same thing that we put in the neighborhood. And I was like, that's so, I mean, it's such a simple way to put it, but Downtown, I, after you said that, I was like Downtown should be a com, a component, as Bob put it. I think that there is reaction that, that KT is, is sharing to having Downtown in the neighborhood because it is a neighborhood. But Downtown should represent Downtown and neighborhood should represent the neighborhood, you know? I, I don't, I think that's fair. That's where people's opinions actually lie with that.
Can I, may I speak to that a bit more or is that?
Sorry.
It's up to you.
Yeah, come on down. And I, and I, the other part that KT said very well, and I think is what's really, really key and important, is the, the full participation. I, I want to say that we met with Bob and Susan. There, there was a drafting of what full participation might look like. It was given to us as a neighborhood. I just put out sort of a near-final draft to the Elna Board today. Hopefully we can get that approved and back to Susan and Diane and Christina to, to look at, but that may be a document that might be included. So, I mean, I see that, that's why I was talking about goodwill. I see the Art Center putting forth goodwill and trying to make sure that this process gets corrected, that we, we start feeling like we're all working together on some things.
Okay.
Thanks for referencing that, Aaron. You know, it, it's so funny coming in from just, just 30 miles over and I, I come to Lawrence two or three times a week. I teach at the university as well as practice in Kansas City. You know, if you look at, if you look at the corridor block by block, there, there really is an opportunity to have this be a very site-specific project, meaning that from, from Connecticut, for example, to Massachusetts Street, there might be a whole different set of circumstances. Even just from New Hampshire to Massachusetts Street might be a different set of circumstances than from, you know, New Jersey to, to New York. The funny thing about all this is, is over the last month, I've, I've heard, I, I, I see so much sort of positioning happening from, from different stakeholders. And, you know, when I look at it, I, I see like Downtown is a huge amenity to East Lawrence and East Lawrence is a huge amenity to Downtown, that there's actually like a, something that's very connective in that tissue, that we would, we would love to tease that out. We would love to get to the part of the process where we start to talk about, talking about like, like what we, what we do for each other as, as, as different stakeholder groups. As I go east of Delaware, I see like these amazing things happening in, in this adaptive reuse in, in these warehouses where there's a small business incubator, there's affordable housing adaptive reuse, there's a, there's a gallery for artists, there's a seed code, there's a, there's sort of a collective of, of emerging artists. And I think to myself, what an amenity for, for the neighborhood. And once again, how, how much amenity East Lawrence is to the emergence of, of this kind of warehouse arts district. So, so for, for us and for our team, like when we walk the corridor and we spend time talking with people, that's what's going through our heads, is like the opportunities are abundant. They're, they're right in front of us. And, and up to this point, you know, I've, I've heard a lot of, of, quite honestly, fears. And I think those, those do have to be addressed before we get to the opportunities. But I don't, I don't necessarily see it as Downtown invading East Lawrence, nor do I see it as, as East Lawrence shutting the door on Downtown. I, I see a lot more opportunity to create those, those connections in a, in a block by block strategy of what's appropriate for each block.
Okay. Thanks, John. Yes.
No, I, I think the discussion is very helpful. You know, I, I think there were concerns about the way this was done. And I think the way it was done was very appropriate. And I think to modify it at this point, to get the input of the East Lawrence citizens to help us with the focus on the, on the next step will be a very good thing. I don't think we should go back and say, well, let's look at how we picked this, how we started this, how we did this. I think we look at this and say, knowing that we're going forward, how do we make this more transparent and make it something that will work for East Lawrence and for the Downtown and for the citizens of Lawrence and not go back to where we started from and try to dismantle it, but to say, how can we make it the best project? Because I think it is a good project. There are some people that might not want to change at all, but I think the changes here can be done in, in a really very good way. And, and the more I hear from the architect, the more I think they made a good decision. So I, I think to allow some time would be a good idea for, on several bases.
Well, I think, the way I see it, I guess, is after, after listening to all of this, I think El Dorado is probably the group to consider for the design team. I think that's fine in the recommendation that's come to us. It's now is the process of, of what is going to all be included in the scope, the partnership with East Lawrence, you know, partnership if it's to be included with Downtown, you know. I don't care really who all that, you know, is involved in that. My main concern is, is what we're going to do because, like I say, the street runs through East Lawrence and, and we got to make it right, you know? and, and we gotta make it right, you know? Once it's in, it's in for a long time. And if it, if it takes an extra two weeks, which is the process, which is the process that we're essentially gonna go through anyway, if, if we go through as suggested by the city manager, we write the, the scope of service, the negotiation, negotiated scope of services, we put it out for a two-week period, it's not gonna be back to us for a month anyway. Why not take the two weeks and look at, or, you know, the next several weeks and go through the time? It makes all the sense in the world.
Sure. So, my recommendation is, is that we, that we direct staff to begin this negotiation deal, but specifically talk about the scope of services, how doing the scope and the fee, specifically bring in East Lawrence DLI as, you know, whoever through this process, as you suggested, the open process of people, you know, having the input, you know, so that they can be like partners in the deal, okay?
Understood.
And we'll work with Aaron Payton on getting a date for a meeting and having those discussions.
That's fine. So are you saying we'll just wait for two weeks to?
We're waiting, yeah.
The, the question I guess I have is, do we accept Eldorado as the preferred choice of consultants? And then work on the scope of services with, with the neighborhood? Or do you want to put that off as well?
Well, see, I don't mind on, I, I've been convinced that I think Eldorado is the team. But, you know, I think, I think you ought to have, you know, a design team. And, and the recommendation I think is solid, so.
Some of the complaints this evening legitimately or otherwise were that, you know, there's a perception that there is a predestination here, a predetermination.
Okay.
Is there any way we can work past that without moving forward? To make sure that people are clear, let people read. I think KT pointed out twenty-four hours ago, the documents released. I'm not sure what else is going to be uncovered by combing through it. I read through it in about an hour and I did some assessment of my own, but I think it's only fair that the neighbors get that same chance. And if it's, if it's only, if this is the linchpin of trust, I want to make sure we have trust.
Okay, fair enough. Terry?
I, I'm very comfortable with Eldorado and what I've heard tonight. I don't mind waiting a week or two to verify that fact.
Okay, so give me a little bit of idea of what the process as you see it should be.
Sounds, sounds like to me that we're going to conduct a, a public meeting, but it's gonna be under the auspices of the, of the East Lawrence Neighborhood Association. Talk about the possible scope of the, the work for the, the Knight Street corridor. And we're then gonna report back to the commission on that meeting. And then after that, we will then more formally engage with Eldorado to come up with a formal contract.
Yeah, because we need a scope for that negotiation process and that scope cannot be arrived at until we communicate with our partner, East Lawrence. I mean, that's kind of what I'm trying to get at, is if we're gonna really engage. As long as it's about specifics and not about historical processes by a private entity, which we had nothing to do with, let's talk about getting, moving forward with the best possible sources of consulting and architecture in this process. And, and make sure the scope is nailed down based on input from our partners in East Lawrence. I mean, that's what we're supposed to authorize tonight is the scope. If you negotiate a scope, I don't want, I don't feel comfortable authorizing that until you actually know what that scope is, unless you.
No, and I think we've got to talk, let's talk to the neighborhood first, because I, I think one of the questions we're gonna ask is how, how does the neighborhood feel it should be involved in some of the details that are gonna go through a process like this?
The neighbors, all of them, yes.
And I think we, I, I think we know enough about the project that we can ask those questions. We don't know enough about what Eldorado may think about that, but that's all right. We'll talk to the neighborhood first.
Okay.
I would cer- I would certainly encourage us to include Downtown, there's some inept meeting as well. Not that Downtown's gonna try and leach into East Lawrence and build skyscrapers down the Delaware streets, certainly not. I think that there are a couple of blocks of very important territory there that they would want to have some input on.
You're sure invited.
Okay, so the motion then is for deferral?
The motion is for deferral and direct staff to meet with the East Lawrence Neighborhood Association to talk about the scope of a possible contract.
And I take. Unless, unless, I'm sorry, but I mean, I, I want to make sure that you can give direction to move forward, but I don't want to move forward until the scope of the work is, is, because it says to define the scope and the fee. And that's what we're approving. And if we're gonna negotiate a scope, if you think we can approve it and then make sure that nothing happens until we meet with the neighbors, then unless that issue is still about Eldorado and I, I don't.
I just want everybody to understand, I don't have a problem with Eldorado. It makes all the sense in the world, but, but as you see.
I missed the presentation last week, so I don't feel as strongly.
Okay, I, I did too. I mean, I was at the police graduation. Here's the deal, if, if we're gonna wait, let's wait, okay? That's all it is, that way there's no pressure on all of us.
Fair enough.
Okay. Okay, I would entertain that motion then for deferral and the direction of the staff.
Moved.
Second.
Motion made in second for deferral made by Commissioner Dever, second by Commissioner Reardon. All in favor of that motion, aye?
Aye.
Aye opposed, passes four to zero. Next item is considered the following items related to Rock Chalk Park. It's authorizing payment to RCP LLC. The amount of ten million, four hundred and twenty-seven thousand, six hundred and four dollars for infrastructure costs withholding twenty-five thousand until the punch list items are completed. Authorized payment of twenty-five thousand once the punch list items are completed. Two, authorizing payment to RCP LLC for costs exceeding the total city infrastructure cost in the amount of one million dollars from the assist foundation donation. And C is to authorize the mayor to execute a trail easement agreement with RCP LLC for nineteen point two acres of property northwest of city-owned property of Rock Chalk Park. Whoa, wait just a second, okay.
Chuck and David are gonna walk us through the infrastructure accounting and Monte Sokup with KU Endowment Association is gonna provide some additional information that we've been requesting.
Okay.
So, our project's finally complete. Let me give you a little background, back in July of thirteen, Bliss Sports Two, RCP LLC began construction on the infrastructure out at Rock Chalk Park. The infrastructure included grading, waterline, sanitary sewer, parking lots, streets, landscaping, storm sewer, lighting, irrigation, tennis courts, trails, everything done at the site. The total estimated construction cost at the time the agreement was entered into was about twelve million, twelve point two million. City staff continued to meet with Bliss on a biweekly basis to discuss infrastructure project, progress, and any other issues that they had. We provided basically twelve monthly reports between July of thirteen and July of fourteen. So now the infrastructure project is substantially complete with a few remaining punchless items. We have a low-ought crossing that needs some work. We've been contacted by Casey Stewart, who's with the construction company, and, and told us that that was completed, but we haven't been able to verify that yet. We've got some cleaning of some sediment out of the retention ponds that we need to do. Repairing a crack on Rock Chalk Lane and some general site cleanup. So, I'm gonna go over real quickly some of the numbers. So with the development agreement, our maximum cost for the entire, for St. Lawrence Sports Pavilion and the infrastructure was twenty-two point five million. The sports pavilion building came in with a bid of ten point five. You take out the sports pavilion, the architect fees, the land, so the total available funds for the infrastructure was ten point two nine million dollars. We did have a couple of change orders that we requested that was outside of the scope of the original development agreement. We requested to add two four-inch conduit from Sixth Street to Rock Chalk, Rock Chalk Drive, along George Williams Way. That's basically for fiber and communications. That cost for the conduit was fifty-two thousand dollars. We requested a change order to the construction of the tennis courts. Instead of an asphalt surface, we asked for post-tension concrete that will result in a longer-term durability of the surface. That change order was fifty-eight thousand dollars. And then we requested a contract performance bond and payment bond with a cost of fifty thousand, eight hundred and eighty-nine dollars. So if you add up the total cost of the con- or the change orders that we've agreed to, we're outside the scope of the original development agreement. That's the one sixty-one, six fifty-four. You add to that the ten point two nine million that was available for the infrastructure, and we come up with a total cap on ours of ten point four, five two, six oh four. During the construction, we, basically we measured everything. We included in our, in our monthly reports, we showed the pay estimates that were being requested of items that were completed, work items that were completed, materials that had been installed. And we quantified all of that and came up with a total that was actually completed and installed of eleven point almost six million dollars. So your actions tonight basically are, well, there's several, as the mayor had mentioned, but pending commission, city commission approval of the infrastructure cost and the supporting documentation, authorized payment to RCP in the amount of ten million, four hundred and twenty-seven thousand, six hundred and four dollars. That number is a little different than the total number that we have up there, because we are recommending that we withhold twenty-five dollars pending completion of the punch list items. And then we are requesting that upon completion of those punch list items that you authorize tonight, that we can go ahead and pay that twenty-five thousand dollars. Then also pending city commission approval of the infrastructure cost and supporting documentation, authorized payment to RCP for costs exceeding the total city infrastructure cost in the amount of a million dollars that will come from the assist foundation donation. Then additionally, the third item is basically there's about nineteen point two acres that Endowment owns that we have trails put on. Endowment has agreed to allow us to use those trails. All we have to do is pay for property tax and associated liability costs, insurance costs. So we ask that you authorize the mayor to execute the trail easement that was attached as well. And we can stand for questions. Did you have some comments, Monte, that you were gonna make upfront or?
Yes, it's, it's, Monte Sokup with Endowment has some additional information in regards to the, some of the lump sum, soft costs that we've been asking for documentation on, loan amounts and professional fee information.
Monte Sokup, KU Endowment Association. We were talking about a partnership on the last issue with three partners. This partnership had five partners. So the complexity of it was tremendous. Our attorneys drafted this agreement that we all tried to live by. And there's been a lot of misunderstanding about how the whole thing was put together. And I would have to commend Dave Corliss, Chuck, David, everybody that worked on this project for the city. The amount of oversight and due diligence done by the part of the city was greater than almost any project I've seen in twenty-five years of doing this kind of business. So I, I hope that everybody feels like that this thing was watched with great care and that these costs that the city staff's putting forward are more than justifiable. The way the deal was worked, as he described, Bliss was required to, Bliss and RCP were required to submit the costs that they incurred on the project. Those costs that were paid and verified by third-party vendors that received that money was in excess of thirteen point three million dollars to construct these improvements. Now, that said, that included more improvements than what was required by the development agreement. So I agree with the city's stance that they did a very good review, a very thorough review of what was in the actual original documents that should have been delivered and the cost of what those original improvements should have been or could have been based on market values. I argued with, with the staff in a very professional way, I hope, that they would concur on some of those items. We got down to the level of arguing about the cost of concrete based on the kind of aggregate that was included. That they said, you know, we didn't get quite the right aggregate we wanted, we're not gonna pay the full unit costs. And we, they reduced the cost in the project in their analysis for those kinds of things. I mean, that's the level of detail that they went to, to, to be the watchdog for the city. And I commend them for that. But ultimately Bliss Two spent thirteen point three million dollars on this project to deliver what's out there today. And the way the development agreement is written, the city will ultimately, if approved tonight, only pay ten point four, five, two million dollars for those improvements, that they'll have the benefit of, along with the university. So as part of the process and all the, the hubbub, some additional, I mean, there have been additional questions that have been asked. And tonight, after being, Lawrence Journal Board posed a couple of questions regarding some of the fees, we were able to obtain that information today. And I have a letter from myself here at KU Endowment explaining some additional information about those. I'm gonna pass that out. With that, other than to say that it's a, been a really challenging project, I think, for a lot of people. It's been a highly successful project, and if you haven't been out there, I'm sure most of you have been, it is a fabulous project for this community. And KU Endowment and RCP are glad to have been a part of it. And with that, I'd stand for questions.
Monte, I guess I have one, is there's a question that you bring up about an audit being performed and whether it was required. And under the infrastructure improvements construction contract, the way I read this thing and the language that I see here is that RCP's auditors will review and report.
No, that's not what I wrote there.
No, I know, that's what I'm reading from my, my notes, I'm sorry.
Oh.
Okay. Is I, was there to be an audit done?
If you read the infrastructure construction contract, which is between RCP and Bliss Sports Two, that the city is not a party to. The RCP had the ability and right to audit the pay application, the final pay application. It's pretty general, normal contract language in a construction contract. Right out, straight out of AIA construction contract language. We had the right to do that, which we did internally. It was not an external audit, it's called an owner's audit. And we did thoroughly go through those numbers. If you think about KU Endowment's position, we have private, private inerment issues with the IRS as far as we cannot overpay a, a private entity for work delivered without having a problem with the IRS. problem with the IRS. So that's why specifically the affidavits and lien waivers were drafted as part of this process, so that all the vendors, the third-party vendors that were paid for work, signed a specific affidavit, and those are, were given to the city and reviewed as part of our internal audit. And KU Endowment and RCP is satisfied with those costs.
Can I ask a question? But you said as part of your audit. Is that part of your audit, or is that your audit?
That is what we intend to be our audit.
So is there an audit?
There is not a third-party separate audit. We provided a letter, all the documentation, and a letter to the city stating our opinion on those costs.
You consider the documents that we've got your audit?
Mm-hmm.
But it wasn't looked at by a third party?
No.
Well, just one question. And one of the questions raised in the article today was with respect to the interest paid, which is very nicely put down here, and now we have the interest rate, whether any of that interest was occurred prior to the change from the property on the east side to the property on the west side of Sixth Street?
I don't have that information with me. I could probably find that out. The loan was a construction loan. So Emprise Bank, which they got the construction loan from, if you're familiar with construction loans, you basically provide pay applications to the bank. The bank has a third party, in this case, B&amp;G Consultants, confirm that what they were asking for payment for was in place at the site, and then the bank pays the bill. So my inclination, without looking, is to say that unless there was construction in place, there was not, there were not draws on the loan. Does that make sense?
Yeah, so you're saying that...
Since there was never any construction on the west side, I can't imagine that there would have been a draw for anything that B&amp;G Consultants, a completely third-party group hired by the bank, would have said, yeah, we'll pay you half a million dollars for something that's not there.
Okay.
Yeah, so let's talk about the term audit. I think it's been thrown around lately in that your entity assessed the work that was done and evaluated the bills that were paid. The bank paid a third party to, which is normal, the construction monitoring process where the...
They're loaning money on something that doesn't exist.
They loan money on actual work that's being conducted. And so BG Consultants was hired by Emprise Bank to confirm that the work was completed. Those, so they were really evaluating the work, not necessarily the cost of that work. It was more related to, is this work actually being carried out? And is this, does this bill match the work that was done? They were probably evaluating whether or not it was a fair market cost, correct? Or am I...
I don't think I can answer that for B&amp;G Consultants, but in general, I would say, you know, the bank's interest is not to overloan. So I would think that they would have been looking at the value to some extent, I mean, probably not...
Right, to the extent that you did. But there was clearly oversight at that level.
Yes.
Because there are several banks got into trouble with, in the past, where they were loaning, giving money out on draws against work that either was not performed or was underperformed.
Right.
So there was, so to your understanding, you know, since this contract was directly with, I believe, your entity and Bliss Two, is that right?
Correct. Yes, RCP LLC and Bliss Two.
Okay. So those two entities reported to KU Endowment? So make sure I understand. So you...
RCP LLC is a sole member LLC, where KU Endowment is the sole member of that LLC.
Got it. Okay, so when you say RCP LLC, that would be the sole source, KU Endowment LLC, sole member?
Correct.
Okay.
Sole member.
So I want to make sure I understand, because there's been some misconceptions, at least with some people I've talked to. The agreement to build the infrastructure was originally between RCP LLC and Bliss Two, and always has been, correct?
The construction contract to build the infrastructure improvements is between those two entities.
Okay.
The development agreement wraps that into an agreement where the city would then purchase the completed construction project from RCP LLC.
Got it. So in purchasing it, please tell me what we bought, to make sure that the public understands what we're paying for this evening.
You bought the parking, all, everything that was in the infrastructure improvement documents, which is a defined document in the development agreement. But basically, as Chuck explained, it was the streets that were in the right-ofways, the city streets, the sewer, sanitary and storm sewer, you know, water lines, all the parking, 1,400 plus or minus parking stalls, eight tennis courts that were lighted, five kilometers of trails. Am I missing something?
The pad site.
The pad site for the recreation center.
Those are the primary items.
Those are the primary items.
Sure. Just, so it's listed, but I want to make sure that we understand that this relationship was created, and you basically were responsible for evaluating the costs associated with that infrastructure, even though we were going to pay for it? That was the agreement upfront, correct?
We were, we contracted for that work, and we had a responsibility to ourselves to monitor the cost of that construction, more in the sense that, you know, that there was obviously value there being, it wasn't being overpaid. But the way the contract was constructed is Bliss Two has not been paid a single cent until the completion and acceptance of the project. So all of the risk, 100% of the risk lies with Bliss Two and RCP, in the sense that if the city never accepts the project, they would never get paid.
And in return for the infrastructure, can you make sure we all understand what the future maintenance and ownership of that, of that infrastructure is for me, please?
I'll do my best. It's, RCP LLC owns the ground that most of the infrastructure, let me step back a step. RCP purchased that quarter section minus the 30-some-odd acres that ran through it that the city already owned, which was granted to them as park. As part of the agreement, we developed, under the infrastructure contract, the pad sites for all three projects were leveled, and the pad site for the city project was built and accepted by the city. And then RCP sold to the city, then the city's site, which you see the cost on it.
That's in there.
That's the 25 acres where the city's project and the city's part of the parking is located. So then RCP owns basically the other half of the parking and the stadium sites where the KU improvements are. We ground lease that ground to Bliss Sports, not Bliss Two, Bliss Sports, which then operates the KU facilities. And Kansas Athletics then leases from Bliss Sports those facilities for their use. Am I missing something?
Well, what you also want to know is maintenance.
Yes.
And the maintenance of the public right-ofway, the public streets, is the city's responsibility.
Okay.
The maintenance of the parking lot on the city-owned portion of the site is the city's responsibility. The maintenance of the parking lot on the other portion is KU's responsibility. KU has responsibility for the maintenance of all of the landscaping, including the landscaping on the city site. And then the city has the responsibility for snow plowing the entire site, the entire parking lot. That was all set out in the agreements that were...
That's a separate agreement. RCP is not a part of that agreement. That's an agreement between the city...
But I want to make sure that was the commissioner's question and that we were trying to respond, who maintains those things?
Right. I think that's, part of the question I have is, you know, we've been, we've participated more so than we anticipated at the beginning of this agreement because of the guaranteed costs that we negotiated upfront and the eventual cost of the rec center. So we ended up paying for, the city and the taxpayers ended up paying for the vast majority of the paved surfaces at Rock Chalk Park. So I want to make sure there's some misunderstanding or that the maintenance thereof is going to be, of the KU proportion of the site is going to be KU's and/or their landlord's responsibility. And the spaces that we needed for our rec center are going to be our responsibility.
Correct.
The roads, as normal, is the city's responsibility. But that the ongoing and perpetual maintenance of the grounds of the landscaping of the area, all but for snow plowing, is going to be the responsibility of the entity that we're discussing payment to this evening, is that you're understanding?
That's my understanding.
Okay. In all of this, there's been some questions as to the auditing process. Ultimately, your responsibility is to make sure that the construction qualities of a certain levels or standard that you set forth as a tenant on that property. And there's been some questions, people calling to question the quality, the workmanship, and the materials. And I guess I want to make sure that you, as the majority user of the majority of the paved surfaces, far greater than the city's number of spaces, are you comfortable with the work that was done? Ultimately, we're paying this bill, but, you know, ultimately, you approved all this, and there's been, you know, you've audited the materials, you've audited the workmanship, you've evaluated this. I want to make sure we have a comfort of what we're buying and receiving.
I do. But it's because of the due diligence that the city provided on this project and the oversight. You know, we have a certain responsibility for the level of quality, but really, the city's staff carry the burden of the load on checking the quality. And, you know, if it said nine inches of thickness of concrete, it was nine inches. If it was eight and a half, the city made note of that and made reductions in their evaluation, when they did their evaluation, comparing the $13 million to the 11 and a half that they, you know, felt like was really a justifiable cost. Like I think I said before, 25 years of doing this, I have not seen a project that's had this kind of observation and diligence by, you know, a staff like you guys have here. Because of that, I don't think RCP as an entity was required to do a lot of actual onsite observation. We don't have the capability to do that. We don't have the engineers and people to do that. We did take a hard look at the cost, and we did take a look at, you know, like I said, the private in-erment issues and those kind of things.
Right, because that's what's confusing to many people, including myself sometimes, is the relationship, you know, the contractual relationship with construction was with you. However, we, because of how things shaped up, ended up paying for the majority of that. And as the ultimate user of that, our portion as well as you, wanted to make sure that we brought up this $13.8 million worth of expenditures. So you've got private in-erment standards, so you evaluated those against your standards. You came up with a number closer to $13.8 million, and that's with the oversight, that if you overpay or overestimates, that there's legal issues there, correct? Can you make, can you understand that?
Yeah. When we looked at, so like Chuck said, there was, in the initial agreement, there was a spreadsheet, a five-page spreadsheet that listed line items of what we anticipated the costs would be per line item, right? So that totaled 12, I have it here in front of me, 12,261, 12,261, that at the onset of the project, based on the documents that we had and the quantities that we thought we were going to install, everybody believed in the unit costs that this would cost 12,261. At the end of the project, Bliss submitted, Bliss Two submitted documentation that showed that they paid 12,885 for those improvements. And they felt that there were an additional half million dollars worth of people that they paid for additional work on the job. But when you compare the 12,261 to what they paid to have the work done, it was 12,885. So when we looked at those numbers, and I, we put up a spreadsheet, or I did, you know, did a spreadsheet that had our projected costs, what they paid, what the city agreed to based on Chuck and his staff's work, and then what those differences were. And we looked at the differences and where those differences were in those numbers. And as we look at that, the differences in the scope of 12 million dollars were so minor that we didn't feel that it was outside of the error, the bounds of error in the estimation. There were a couple areas, obviously, that stood out that had additional costs. For instance, the landscaping, where Bliss Two, on their own, decided to install about twice as many trees as were required. When the city's review, they said, we're only paying for what was required on the documents. We don't have to, we don't obligated to pay for any, you know, this additional X number of trees. So they reduced those costs, and that's how you get from the 12,885 down to the 11,7 that the city, the city staff feels was appropriate cost for what was in the original construction documents. I know it's very complicated, but we looked at those costs as well and said, you know, these aren't unreasonable for them to have spent. Plus, we have, you know, we have third-party affidavits and lien waivers from vendors like Gould Evans and like King's Construction and Qual Lighting and Emprise Bank that say, this is what we were paid for this work on this project by Bliss Two. Whether he got a good deal on that or not, I can't attest to. What I can attest to is that the city looked at it and said, when we look at what we get charged on other projects, based on our experience on other projects and the exact quantities installed, this is what we think the value of the, what was in the original plans was. And that number's 11, what's 11,6 up here?
Okay.
It's not us to quit, you know, if I want to go pay more for a Camry, then somebody else wants to pay you, that's my business. Doesn't mean I got, you know, the best deal, but the person that bought it at the lower price did. And that's where I see the city. They're only going to, you're only obligated, based on the deal that you cut at the beginning, you're obligated only to pay the 10,452 for what someone else paid 13 million-plus dollars to have put in place.
Okay. Sorry, Mike, I just wanted to make sure.
Well, when it's appropriate, I have a question.
I have a question now, Monty.
Yeah, sure.
Going to the legal work on the infrastructure development. I questioned yesterday morning, I met with Dave and Tony Wheeler, and brought to the attention July and August of 2012, okay? At that time, we were still working on the project west of K-10 Highway.
Correct.
Okay? And I see $33,000 worth of bill in here. And we still had a project west of K-10 Highway until second week of September, as I recall.
Correct.
Okay? How is it that we are being billed for $33,000 on legal work, on infrastructure development, on a project that, in my opinion, didn't exist?
Okay. If you look at the definition of what the legal work that, in the development agreement that was to be paid for by the city, it was our opinion that that fell within, within the definition that was in the development agreement, okay? I can't argue... I can't argue with you that, you know, I would have the same question. And I think, like every other line item in the spreadsheet, if the city disagrees with that, just like they did on any other line item on that spreadsheet, they should look at that, figure out what they think, you know, they're, they think the right number is. And reduce that number up there, that eleven-six number up there by that appropriate amount. They did, we, the city did that in their review with every other line item. And until the initial information submitted on that was not the most complete. And and Dave and his staff requested additional documentation, and we finally got that documentation. And I just don't think that it got reviewed before all this stuff went onto the, onto the website and got posted, so. I really think that if the city disagrees with that, they should take a look at that and make the evaluation just like they did on any other, every other line item. But I would say, just like the information that I handed you today, they may, you know, the staff may not have had that in time to get this posted and in the agenda, so. I think, again, if you look at the definition that's in the development agreement, I think they have the right to ask for it. Again, and as long as it's above your cap, I'm not sure that it has a huge relevance to the ultimate outcome for the city. I understand that you want to, you want to look, you know, you need to look at it and be comfortable with what you're paying.
Yeah. Monty, here's my deal, here's my deal. And and just no question about my record here, okay? Here's my deal on this whole thing. We agreed to a cap, there's no doubt about it, that that was the original deal, we're going to pay whatever the cap amount was. Based on the information that's provided and the information that you provided staff.
Right.
Were we given the best value for the dollar, or was, did we just pay the cap amount?
I think you got an extremely good value for what was installed out there. I truly, I mean, I've been in construction for twenty-five years, I've put several billion dollars worth of construction in place for school districts and universities. And this is a highly unconventional way to deliver a project, there's no doubt about that. And but I felt like the city did a good job in negotiating that cap. You got it, you had an amount that you could spend, and you negotiated a deal that allowed you to not go over that cap. And if a contractor paid thirteen point three million dollars to have this work put in place, and you're able to buy it for ten million four hundred thousand dollars, I think you got a really good deal. Understanding that the contractor took all of the risk, because if he had been underbid, you know, if the rec center had come in at fifteen million instead of ten five, he would only have been paid, he would have, he would have had to deliver, still deliver all of the infrastructure for that same cap. Granted, he took his own destiny in his hands by submitting the lowest possible bid he could submit for the, for the rec center, and you got the benefit of that. But ultimately, he had to deliver the rec center, the land, the design for the rec center, the design for the infrastructure, and all of the infrastructure for twenty-two five. So in my opinion, I think you got a good deal.
Monty, I guess, I'm still not necessarily tracking the information you've given this evening on the on the loan. Why is the, why is the interest rate based off the twelve nine three six one forty-five and twelve cent number? Why, why isn't it?
The interest, the amount or rate?
Well, the, as I understand it, the the loan balance.
Right.
Was twelve million nine thirty-six one forty-five and twelve cents.
Correct. That's the amount he borrowed by the end of October.
Right. But but we don't want to pay interest costs on what he borrowed. We want to pay interest costs on just the infrastructure that we want to pay for.
Okay.
I mean, why, why would we pay an interest cost on what he borrowed? We want to pay an interest cost just based on what he, what he borrowed to meet his contractual obligation with us for infrastructure.
Okay.
And I don't, I don't think it ought to be the twelve nine number, it ought to be, I mean, I think it's eleven.
Okay.
I mean, we need to go back and and look, I'm not, it's not wise to make decisions on the fly tonight on all of this, because we just got this, but it seems to me that it would be based on a lower, it ought to be based, as I, as I read the document, it's infrastructure improvement costs, which we now have a number for, and and the loan costs, we need to check all of that. And again, I don't doubt this, I didn't doubt the letter from, from M-Prize, but now that we've got this, it helps us understand how we, how we got that, that total amount. And I don't know that, that twelve nine number is the correct number. It seems to me that it ought to be our infrastructure costs, including the change orders, and including what we, what we see out there, I think is appropriate for the Assist Foundation, because that's, that's essentially city money. You all understand that the Douglas County Community Foundation has a million dollars from the Assist Foundation that is ready to come to the city under this agreement. But we need to, I think we need to treat those expenses just as thoroughly as we should any of the other expenses. But I don't think it gets up to twelve, twelve nine.
Okay. You want me to explain that?
Yes, that would, that would be helpful if.
Okay, so if you, if you go by the letter of the development agreement, the infrastructure costs are the costs that the contractor spent to deliver these improvements. Has nothing to do with what the city payment is, okay? So when we review this and put it through, this is what he spent on interest, and this is the loan amount that that ultimately capped at in October. So that's the cost that we submitted as, as believing that that's the cost that was included. Okay, so again, I would go back to, you know, your methodology of reviewing what you feel the improvement should have cost in the open market. And I think if you did that, you would go back, and because this is a structure, construction loan, he didn't go out and borrow twelve point nine million dollars. He borrowed half a million dollars in his first pay application, and he paid interest on that. And the next pay application, it was another million five, and he paid interest on that, so the, so the amount kept going up. So it only reached the twelve million, would have only reached the twelve million dollars in the last few months of the project. So I would say that if you wanted to go back and say that, you know, we wanted to be capped on paying for interest at the level that, you know, the eleven-six that we feel is appropriate, I think you could adjust, you know, that number by that amount. I can tell you that it won't amount to a tremendous number, it's probably going to be twenty thousand dollars, because it's the last two or three months of interest on the differential between the two.
No, I just, I just.
But I think that's a reasonable.
Well, I'm just trying to fall on the agreement. And then is it possible then, again, I don't want to get too complicated here, but if, if, if the, on a construction loan, the money is delivered in tranches to the, to the contractor. But what, but we need to know the timing of that in order to figure out exactly how the interest rate clock works, right?
Right, and I think.
Can we, can we get that information?
I think we could request that information.
Okay, because I think that would be valuable to look at as well, or have somebody look at, because.
I don't disagree with you at all.
Because if it was, I mean, if it was all borrowed up, I mean, I could see how it matters, how long, how long that that money sat away from the bank.
Well, yeah, and we go back.
And again, I don't, I'm not, you know, again, this is, you know, trying to, you know, in good faith, work on it, but we're also trying to explain it all.
Right.
And I think, you know, I'd like to have, you know, an opportunity to look at this some more since we just got it this evening.
Sure.
Other questions, Monty?
Yes, sir.
Well, in the article, it also discussed the two hundred and twelve thousand, five hundred and thirty-five in legal fees and.
Correct.
What was paid to the hourly rate and information like that, is that available?
That's a client attorney privileged information. So as soon as they turn that over, and it's not between RCP, it's between Bliss Two and their attorney, so I don't, they won't even give me that information.
Did we ask for it, though?
We asked for hourly billings.
Right.
On a daily basis on what they did, and they refused to turn it over.
The client can waive that if they don't want to.
Well, the client's attorney has advised him not to waive that, because it opens their records.
We just want, I.
I understand.
We just have desired to get the itemized bill, that that helps us know.
Right.
What it was worked on.
We, as you know, they originally gave us a lump sum, and we got them to break it down by month, which will probably yield some analysis.
Well, it has as far as when it starts.
Right. So I, I can't force him to give it to us. I don't have a contractual way of doing that. So I, I don't think we'll get it.
Dave, one of the questions that I would have, and while Monty's here, is that, you know, based on the amount of money that we're being asked to pay in legal fees, at what point did we actually have a project? Was it the time that the development and all the agreements were signed, or was it prior to that?
Well, I think it's, it's probably a matter of judgment. You, you all will recall, some of you were here.
Don't bother me reading the word out.
In this, I mean, you know, it started in the early spring of two thousand and twelve. We were talking about doing a project, city-owned project, city-owned land, north of the Walmart. We decided that we wanted to look at a different opportunity, to partner with someone else to do something with KU. We eventually then started looking at, at property that was owned by the Schwada family on the west side of K-ten. There were a lot of discussions, a lot of deal sheets about who was doing what, talking about are we going to own anything, are we going to lease stuff, all those types of things. We were incurring costs, we had Gary Anderson with Gilmore and Bell, our, our attorney that helps us on these matters. We were incurring costs as early as April of two thousand and twelve with Gary, but that was for the project on the west side of K-ten. It was a similar sports complex, but it was not site-specific. The, the development agreement talks about professional services attributable to the zoning, plating, plan approval and permitting of the, of the recreation center site and the infrastructure improvements and to the negotiation of this agreement. So to the extent that we now, you know, we could say, you could argue, well, that's not transferable from one site to another. There obviously were elements of that were transferable as far as who was going to own what and things like that. Just, it's probably a little bit of a mixed bag. He's, he's saying he could take it off, I mean, we have reached certain caps, but I want to be genuine on all the, all the numbers, too, that's what we're trying to get at. So I, I take your direction on that. I think we could remove off stuff until probably summer of twelve. It's probably reasonable. But we were pretty, pretty involved as far as talking about who was going to do what and who was going to own what and those types of things. That was a, that was a key part of those discussions that I recall from two thousand and twelve.
So, if I can add to that, for whatever it's worth, RCP was not a part of the Schwada deal. We started incurring costs related to this project in the summer of twelve, late summer of twelve. So at that, we started incurring legal costs, RCP is the organization.
Would this have happened after August twenty-first? Just pull it out of the air.
I don't know. It's the day after my birthday.
I still, we still need to look at those soft costs and come back with a better recommendation.
Okay, any other questions, Monty? Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions, your staff at this time? Any public comment?
Greg Robinson, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. I find it interesting, I've been down to a few of these meetings, and it seems that we have entities that come before this commission that are better prepared than the deep pockets of our community. No disrespect to Mr. Soke, but we always get these people coming in here saying, well, I don't have that information, I don't have that information, I want you to act on it, but we don't have this information. Make them give you the information, the taxpayers demand it. Why should taxpayers pay for this without seeing the information? We're just to believe, I just saw approximately a thirty-minute presentation about, just believe us. There's nothing to back it up except their words. We got a letter that's typed November eighteenth, these, we're spending two hundred and twenty-some thousand for legal fees? How do we know if we weren't double-billed? But then we're just told, oh, forget about it, because you're capped, so it won't matter anyway. But we should, we should know whether we've been double-billed, the work that was done on the west side of K-ten and then brought back to the east side. You know, I just tried to make notes as it was going along, as told about how great oversight we had at the site. Well, that's good, we should have oversight on every city project. But when I heard the word aggregate come up, that caused me concern. What does he mean by aggregate? The public may not understand what he means. Did we get limestone aggregate? Or did we get what the city requires in granite aggregate? It makes a big difference in the concrete that you get and the lasting durability of it, because our city code requires that curbs and gutters be made out of certain aggregate so it withstands tests of time and all the adverse conditions that it's going to get. So what did we get? We just told there was an aggregate change, but what was it? Public's not told that. Were you guys told that? What was the aggregate change? Did we get the limestone that will, that will fail earlier than the granite? That's just a given. But we're not told that, don't worry about it, you're at your cap, right? We're at our cap, so don't worry about it. The land deal that they keep talking about was a great deal. That's a great deal, city got a great deal? No. KU Endowment got a great deal, and so did Bliss Sports. I didn't see anywhere in the agreement that, and I understand that some of you were not on the commission, and Simon, I know Mary Amick, you were against this, so just take the comments for what they're worth, but where is the interest or where's the provisions for a future benefit district to recoup the city's investment in extending that infrastructure all the way out to sports building? It's not in there. You know why? Because some of those entities own land around there, and guess what they're going to do? They're going to come to the city with a new project, and they're going to pay their tap fee only. So we get to supply them continual city services for a tap fee. And that's why we took more time on that Ninth Street corridor than this whole Rock Chalk, Chalk project, in a sense of how it was rushed through at vote. There was no vetting of these issues that are now coming up. Why are these issues coming up now? These should have been worked out way in advance, way in advance. In reference to, I think that Mr. Corliss was quoted as saying, we don't have standing. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Greg, I want to, I want to respond, and I believe that I can do this. Rush through this thing wasn't. I, I mean, I sat through many a meeting, and sometimes I think my colleagues were ready to do me in at times, but, and that's fine, you know, but understand, this body did not rush this thing through. This thing, this thing went through, what, a year and a half or so? It seemed like for a long time.
Mr. Mayor, I'll retract my comment.
A meeting after meeting, I want you to know that.
Okay.
And in the end, and in the end, and I'll give you a second here, but in the end, you know, there was a difference of opinion amongst commission members. But where we are tonight, we are, everybody on this body, everybody on this body wants to make sure that, that, that the citizen taxpayer got the best deal. That's what this is about.
And I, and I agree with that, Mr. Mayor, but however, the process, now again, maybe it was a long process, but as I recall it, it was always the type of things we just discussed with Ninth Street corridor, which is, hey, let's get the community out, let's vet it, let's get all the questions. But the one thing that was, this was really just put us, what do you want out there? It was never, hey, we've got these three entities, this is some kind of hybrid new agreement between private entities. They won't even turn over their books. You know, I mean, that's, this is where whoever's looking at our agreement, looking out for our interest, drop the ball, quite frankly. That should have been included in any agreement with these private parties to make them turn over their book, so we know that the taxpayers is getting what they bargained for. And in this case, I'd argue that we didn't, because a good deal was for the other entities, and we got a facility, yes, we do, but we kept capped at twenty-five million, and they got all free infrastructure.
Twenty-two and a half. That's two and a half million dollars, that's a big difference. That's ten percent less.
Well, I've got a comment, too.
Go ahead.
I, I don't think Mr. Robinson's quite right in saying that all the infrastructure's out there and all they have to do is tap into it. I don't believe that's correct at all, just from my knowledge of, of the way it's been installed, so I don't, I don't believe that's very accurate. Maybe you have specific information to back up your statements, but I would challenge that.
Which.
Chuck can answer there.
Well, I was just going to have, ask either Chuck or David to respond to the aggregate question.
Dave, you're gonna have to help me with this problem, but, um, there were a couple of areas where limestone aggregate was installed. One was on this Axis Road, runs around the, uh, west side of, uh, KU Stadium. And then there was just a little section of rec path in here. We have not included any payment for those areas. We don't, this is all on Endowment, KU, Bliss Two, RCP, however, the entities work, that's all theirs. They were asked if that was sufficient, um, they were okay with that, um, so, but we are not paying for it. It's not included in there. There's a hundred-foot of recreation path in this area here. It had limestone. Our inspectors found that, told them that that had to be removed. It's now been removed. It's a rec path. We don't have any issues with it necessarily as far as longevity goes, but we're not paying a cent for that. So, those quantities were not included in, in the payment. All the, all the rest have been installed to the city's specifications, um, and we accept them.
Can you comment on the fact, what I just said about the utilities are all there for anyone else to the, to the south to just plug into at no cost?
Um, no, because the sewer line, um, just sits, just sits to the south over here.
That was previously installed.
Yes, it was, it was. And then, yeah, so there's no sewer line, there's no water infrastructure that actually came off and just ran around the site, so there's, there's no benefit.
Well, there, there was a special assessment benefit district to build Georgia Williams Way north of Sixth Street. The property on the east side and the west side both paid for that, and the city at large paid for the intersection. So, for the extension of Georgia Williams Way up to what used to be the city boundary where Rock Chalk Park Drive is, that was paid for by a special assessment benefit district where the benefiting property on the east side and the west side was assessed the costs, sat there for a while. Now, the other streets that were installed, those were installed pursuant to this agreement where we're paying the bulk of the cost for the access to Rock Chalk Park. That is correct.
Well, I'm telling you this, I'm getting sick and tired of statements just like Mr. Robinson just made. It makes us look like we're a bunch of dummies that are providing all kinds of wealth for other developers. I think that's just ridiculous. I'm sick and tired of that kind of stuff.
But the answer was given by Chuck, that there was benefit district that was established, and you have property owners that participated.
But there was, there's not gonna be any unfair benefit go to any other property owners because of Rock Chalk Park.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions of Chuck? Okay, thanks, Chuck. Any other public comment? Okay. Dave, based on the information that we have received tonight, what would be your recommendation for, for review and consideration of the loan payment?
If it's, if it's acceptable, I'd, I'd still like to look at the, the, the loan information. I think it, I think that number needs to be adjusted. I think, uh, Monty's indicated that, I think you indicated tonight that you might be able to get the bank information as far as that was paid out. I mean, I, I think that, that's a difference in what the loan dollar amount, but I just think that that's a good way to, to check that. Probably need to have somebody else run the numbers. Uh, the, the legal fees, uh, I, I didn't use the word, I don't think, with Mr. Lawhorn standing. But I think that's what was ended up in the newspaper, but I think he captured my, my view as to whether or not we would have the authority to, um, require that. I think we could also say we're not gonna pay it till we get more itemization on the, on the legal fees. I think it's certainly reasonable to look at the legal fees, uh, earlier than, as you suggested yesterday, earlier than what, uh, we actually had a project, and we can look and see how that, um, changes the numbers as well. Without knowing the, the, the work and the hours, it's difficult to speak to the reasonableness of it. And a conversation I had with Monty, he indicated that that's roughly what they spent in regards to legal fees at the Endowment Association. Is that correct?
Correct, for the same time period, for the same project.
I know that's not what we spent. We spent a little bit, we spent less than that. But, so, I mean, if you're trying to figure out the reasonableness of those fees, it's, the, the information is what we have so far. We could try and make some more inquiry into that, and then the, the soft expenses. You know, we can, uh, we could proceed, you could, you could say, well, we wanna make a partial payment, or you could say, no, let's have a, a, a further vetting of this information and, and more, more review. You know, an audit, in my opinion, is when a third party looks at something. It's not when, when, when I audit a number on behalf of the city, that's not an independent audit. We hire an independent auditor to look at city books. We haven't done that here. Endowment's indicated they're not doing that with, with this, so that may be something that you all wanna look at. I know that we've, we've talked about that. You know, I, I do think that definitely the loan number needs to be more rigorously looked at, and, you know, the professional fees, um, I don't know that we're gonna be able to get any more information on the professional fees. Is, there's not any more, you've given us that, all the information you have.
So, the question, so the question that I would have for the commission, are we comfortable with the information that we have now? We're gonna go through a process where we're gonna look at the loan, we're gonna look at the legal fees and, and whatever, whatever other of the soft, soft cost fees that, you know, we're, we're being asked to pay. But, um, are we comfortable with the information that we have? Or do we believe that further investigation or even an audit from our side into these numbers is, is warranted?
Bob? Well, there's obviously some questions that are out there yet that we need to resolve before we make full payment. I think that, uh, if we, it seems to me like if we audit, we're gonna be auditing, auditing our city's staff numbers for the most part for the, for the infrastructure type work, the pavement, uh, the water lines, sewer line. I don't, uh, as demonstrated by, uh, Monty Soke tonight, uh, he, he had nothing but praise for the, the actual verification process. So, I'm of the opinion that's probably not gonna generate much difference in terms of what we've already have based on what staff is prepared. They've done the work. We owe them the money. I know when I do work and it's time to get paid, I wanna get paid. So, I, I think what we should consider is paying a portion of this, the majority of it, in fact, and then holding up on things that we have questions about and try to iron that out a little bit later on. But, um, you know, the work's done, and we've approved it, and we've verified it, and it's time to make a payment. And that's where I'm at. I, I think that we should try and figure out some percent, and it should be a high percent of the total of what we're already, uh, what we owe, and we make that payment.
I agree with Bob. I think there's one thing that we need to consider, and that is what level or what standard of, of manifestation or demonstration of hourly rates and times and fees we're gonna expect from the professional services ranks? I don't think it's fair to single out the legal aspect of the law firm when the architects and engineers also submitted lump sum costs without itemized bills. So, I mean, if we're gonna seek clarification on these and make sure that we feel comfortable with, and subject them to the same level of diligence that we did all the construction work, I don't know, I don't know why we would just single out the law firm.
Well, that's a good point.
I mean, I think it's unfair to do so indiscriminately. If we're going to evaluate and ask for more information, so I would suggest that we withhold, you know, payment on those numbers until it's time. If we're going to seriously try to get, um, the, um, legal billing rates and/or times lined out, I think it's only fair to do the same thing for any professional service that we're in question. So, um, because I don't, I don't know if we're gonna be able to get that information or not, but I certainly think we should ask for it. If we haven't asked for it enough, we'll ask for it again.
What, maybe, uh, staff or Monty can help us, what would be the division here of the 11.6 million that we owe? What portion of that would be the soft costs that we still wanna investigate along with the interest rate? What, what number is that?
We could, we've got it on the website.
While we're figuring that out, I, I would concur with, uh, Mike and Bob that we do owe money. We oughta pay what we owe, and we can dispute what we, and ask for verification, not dispute, but ask for verification of what we don't know.
Six hundred and fifty thousand or so.
Well, Mr. Mayor, go ahead.
Um, I think, you know, we provided the documentation that we have for the legal fees and the, the professional fees, and I understand your interest, and it's partly this, a collision of two different kinds of worlds in the sense that in the developer world, you go out and you ask for a fee. Many times, you would go out and ask for a fee, this is the project I wanna do. What would you charge me to do that project? And the design consultant says, I'll charge you $200,000 to do that. Okay, so that's kinda the way that, and, and you just, you know, when, when you deliver this work product and makes pay requests, you pay those amounts up to that $200,000. And that's what happened essentially with Bliss Two paying for the design of the infrastructure. Okay? In the municipal world, you typically contract on unit cost basis. So, you say, I want this, when I get billed, I wanna, I want you to bill me on hourly basis, more like an attorney would typically bill. And I wanna see, you know, at schematic design, this is how much I'm gonna pay you. And at the design development, this is how much I'm gonna pay you, and that's all lined out in a contract. And those are set points, and that's how you pay the project. Sorry. So, that's how you pay the project. So, what I'm telling you is that info, that hourly information that you guys so desperately wanna see does not exist. There are not outbillings from the architects and engineers that say Jimmy spent three hours designing this pavement design. It doesn't exist. They, Bliss Two went out and contracted for this work on a lump sum basis and said, this is what I've agreed to in this document. We've gotta design this to the city's standards, and you bill me for that as you go along. So, I, I'm just telling you, that hourly thing that you are seeking on those kinds of contracts doesn't exist out there. It wasn't built that way. It wasn't billed that way or contracted for that way.
We, we do, we do have the affidavits from them, but I think it's, maybe one way to get at it is we could make them specifically attest to what Monty's saying. Don't have any doubt as to what Monty's saying. We'd have them specifically attest to it. And then we could also, we could, we do have a, a professional design fee policy that looks at how costs are allocated, you know, we're, we're looking, we can look and give you a report on that and see how those numbers compare from a reasonableness.
Right, and that's kinda what we did when we did our...
But that, I, if they don't exist, I don't, I don't know that, or you don't, if you, if you have them do it after the fact, you kinda wonder about how, how accurate that's gonna be. I guess they could do it after the fact.
So, what we did is, in our review, is we looked at the percentage of the construction cost compared to the design fee. And typically on that kind of project, we felt that that fee percentage fell within the market norm of what you would pay on the open market for that kind of work. And that's why we passed that through as a cost. It's not atypical to see somewhere between seven and 12% uh, design fees on different kinds of projects. And I think that, I think like Dave said, you, you probably have a better feel for infrastructure projects than I do of what that fee normally would be, and I think they could look at that and probably see that it's within those parameters. Thanks.
We, we don't have this on, we did not have this dollar amount on your claim this evening. What we can do is we can, we can work to take off the, the line items that you see here, legal fees, loan origination, loan for project financing, professional fees. Take that off, have that, have that number then on your claim next Tuesday night to pay while we are still then doing the additional review of those items. So, you're not, you're not, you're not having to do the math tonight to come up with that number. We'll do that tomorrow and, um, have that on your claim for next Tuesday. If that's your, if that's your direction, and then your other direction is that, okay, let's, let me, let me have someone look at this and calculate it appropriately, um, and then we'll try and work on the substantiation of the reasonableness of the other professional fees. That's, that's my suggestion on how to proceed, if that's, if that's, if that's helpful.
Dave, can you please explain to me if we go through this process and identify costs that are, in our minds, you know, should be less than what we're submitted, how, how that compares against our capped-out rates? How, how will we prioritize or what will we, I'd identify as justified costs? Since we know the project was actually over that, tell me how that's gonna work.
Well, I think you're gonna, you're, you're gonna be at your cap number, and then you're gonna be into the, the donation from the Assist Foundation for the rest of this amount. Am I, am I responding to your question?
No, I mean, okay, let's assume that we've got $100,000 fees that we don't believe are justified or whatever. How do you pick which items you're gonna pay for because we've capped out? So, how do you choose the items that will pay, that will be paid for in the event that there is not an exceedance or a reaching of?
Well, if, if it's a, if it's a reasonable cost, then we need to include it in the list of costs that we should, um, attribute to the project as, as either being paid for by the city or paid for, being paid for by the city with the Assist Foundation money. I mean, that's, yeah, that's, again, we're, we're just kinda stepping over that. That's one of the largest donations to the community that I'm ever aware of. And, and, and it's obviously a clear help in us doing the project, but we still wanna treat it as, and show the genuineness of those, of that, of those expenses as well. Chris, I don't know that I'm answering your question. I'm trying to.
Well, it's been mentioned that we don't care because there's a cap, so who, who cares?
Well, I don't, I don't know that.
So, I'm just, this is, uh, so assuming there are costs that exceed, you know, that, uh, that is 180 or 250 or $2 million worth of other expenses, how are we gonna choose, assuming we go back under the cap at some point in time, if we were to sit down and vet this and come up with some number that we felt like was more reasonable? Although I don't think that's going to happen, it's possible, um, if we get the information we need. How do you go about selecting which items we'll pay for?
Well, we'll, we'll have to show you why certain, why these, why these costs are appropriate and why they're not. We'll just have to show you that. So, what, what I'm hearing is of commission interest is, is that we go back to the, the staff memo, take out those soft costs that we still have continuing questions about, and then put that dollar amount on for payment next week.
Yes.
So, you're, you're gonna take out, pardon me, around 800,000, is that, am I doing that right?
Right, we're gonna set that aside and pay the rest of it.
I mean, those are the, those are the...
Yeah, these, the, what's...
Those are the area, the total of the areas of concern.
Legal fees, loan originations, loan, and I, and I think we could probably fairly quickly figure this out, but I don't wanna do the math tonight. I don't think that's smart. Let's step back and look at it. And I also think we need to see how it was, was paid over time. That should tell us. They should be able to really show that fairly quickly.
That's paying about 90% of what we owe, so that's, that's reasonable to get that much done.
Precisely, and then do that. I mean, we're using the infrastructure out there.
Yeah, let it stop. They did work.
Yeah, but also, if there's any other questions that we may have as we go through all the new information that we may have, you know, we need to get it to staff immediately so that there can be questions.
Correct.
Or answers to the questions.
If there's still questions on it, we don't have to pay that portion of the costs.
Okay. Anything else? Okay. Dave's got his direction on that. I'm sure you don't wanna do an audit. Sorry. It's clearing my throat. Okay, thank you all.
I mean, you bring that up, but I mean, we did an audit, didn't we? I mean, we did our stuff. I guess I'm wondering is, do we audit these numbers, and that's kinda what we're talking about doing right now?
Yeah, and, and I think, you know, let's see where we are next week, okay? I mean, you know, like I say, you know, I bring up the, you know, Mike, you're right in bringing up all of the soft costs that we have, you know, making sure that they all fit. I mean, I, I bring up, and, and I think I made mention, I was talking about all the soft costs. I bring up the idea of the legal because I'm looking at it and I'm saying, I don't believe that we had a project in July of 2012. We didn't have this specific project.
Sure.
So, that's my question. So that's my question as I, as I talked to Dave yesterday, Dave and Tony yesterday morning, so anyway.
Well, that's true.
Okay, so then we will do that next week, correct?
That's, if that's your direction, that's what we'll do.
But we still have to authorize some payment tonight.
Well, I, I think what I would ask is that you approve a motion that directs us to pay, to place on your claims next Tuesday for your review and approval, the balance of the infrastructure payment, less the soft costs related to loan, professional fees and legal fees.
Moved. Second. Okay, we've got a motion made in second. Okay, now is that going to include the monies, the next item, the assist foundation?
No, no, we're going to wait.
Okay, because, anyway.
Right.
So just do an A and then C separately?
Right. Okay. Well, gentlemen, I appreciate, you know, your willingness to look through these things and all, but, you know, I still have my concern about it. So anyway, motion made in second, made by Commissioner Shum. Second by Commissioner Reardon, okay. All in favor of the motion to go through and place the item for, on the claims for approval? Is that what you said, Dave? Less the soft costs. Okay, all in fa, that's for next week's agenda, to be placed on the claims. All in favor of that motion, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Passes three to one, okay? Next item is to authorize the mayor then to execute a trail easement agreement with RCP LLC for nineteen point two acres, a property northwest of city-owned property at Rockchuck Park.
This is property owned by the Endowment Association, single-purpose entity. It is not involved in the KU athletics lease at all. You know where it is, it's the northwest corner of the track. They have agreed, and I think it's some point of gratuitity on their point, to allow us to have trails on that site. Our requirement is to pay the property taxes, which historically have been fairly nominal on the property. And then the, the Endowment Association will allocate a portion of their liability insurance on that property as well. That'll be our only cost, there's no other fee associated with our use of that. But it does help us complete the, the trail network there. So I think it's a, I think it's a worthwhile use of that property, at least at this point.
Dave, I didn't understand, why would property tax be owed on that property if it's going to be?
It's not, it's not owned by us, it's owned by the Endowment Association. Endowment Association pays property taxes.
Seventeen dollars for thirty-seven dollars. You know, the, I just want to thank the Endowment Association for that. That was, that allowed us by using that to complete a five K trail system, which is absolutely beautiful out there. And then as we get to another item later tonight, it's going to allow us even greater flexibility to get to a ten K trail system through another grant. But anyway, without that, we would not have been able to do what we did. So we really appreciate that, it really came in handy. So it's, it's worth the thirty-seven dollars a year, I think, whatever it is. Hope you'll carry that message back.
Sometimes mill levies change, Commissioner Reardon.
The, the question I have is that, is that into perpetuity?
No, it's not, it's like it's five years. I mean, they're not, and if they want to use it for something else, we'll.
Make the trail go around it.
Don't know that it's going to be used for a while, though.
Any other questions, the staff? Public comment on this item? And the, the item that is before us is to authorize the mayor to execute the trail easement agreement with RCP LLC.
Second.
Motion made in second for authorization made by Mr. Shum, second by Commissioner Reardon. All in favor of that motion, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, passes four zero. Next item, thank you all. Next item is consider approving change orders for BA Green Construction, the amount of six hundred and ninety thousand nine hundred and eighty-three dollars, and change order for Gould Evans Architects in the amount of sixty-seven thousand, six hundred and fifty-three dollars and eighty-four cents. And consider authorizing final payments to BA Green and Gould Evans Architects upon successful completion of the punch list items. And then consider authorizing placement of the unspent contingency funds from the eighteen million dollar bond issuance of fifty-two thousand forty-one dollars. The city's capital improvement reserve fund allocated for future library maintenance needs. Dave?
Mayor Commissioners, hopefully the staff memorandum that we put together is relatively straightforward. Our goal in the project was to keep the project under eighteen million dollars. We did utilize the contractor for some specific work that was, we thought, outside the library scope. One of the, the big challenges with the library project was we wanted to put money into the library building, not so much the parking garage. Been fairly successful with our new payment system in the parking garage that you all authorized earlier, and it's mentioned there, that we paid for, that's outside that, that dollar, outside the eighteen million dollar project. We did have a number of change orders. Brad has graciously agreed to be here this evening to respond to any questions as well. I think he's got a, a neat memo that shows increased utilization and attendance in the library. Did have some remaining contingency that, in my opinion, you, I mean, you could put that in the bond and interest fund. We do know we've got one HVAC unit, it's a chiller, it's in there. It's above their IT department that was not replaced as part of the project. It's been a little bit of a challenge, we may have to spend some of that money on this. But we'll have some maintenance needs for the library project. So that's, that's where we recommend that you put that money because we'll have some, some library needs. But again, we think it's been a successful project. Be happy to respond to any questions that you might have about it.
Questions? I am glad yesterday you told me when I suggested that we put that fifty-two thousand back, you know, against the bonded indebtedness, that there are other projects that, especially that chiller, that we may have to pay for anyways.
Well, Brad's got a great brand-new library, but he's, it's also larger and did increase the mill levy for them, which I like to remind him. But he'll have some, some maintenance need on that facility, not, not next year hopefully, but in the years to come, and hopefully this will help us keep it look like a, a great new facility.
So then it is appropriate to keep that money in a contingency, even though that the election held was for the construction of a new library? Construction renovation? Okay.
I believe so.
If I may.
Please.
My name is Brad Allen, I'm the director of library.
Hey, I didn't see you behind that post.
I do just want to say, you know, I mean, we, that this was a great project. The architects have done a great job, Sean for being here, and the construction guys have done a really good job. That said, this is a really large project, and there are still a few things that I think are going to continue to need to be tweaked, like acoustics that we're working on. And there are just different issues that I think that are going to arise. You could consider maintenance or improvements. That I think it is important to keep this small pocket of money. I mean, we, I, as much as anybody, want to come in under budget too, but I appreciate, I just, I just want to say that I'm in support of, of staff making this recommendation. I think it's important to keep that there. Should we have some things that would improve the quality of the libraries? We're, we're done, but I think it's important to have a little bit of backup to be able to try to tweak the building as necessary to make it better, especially since we came in a little bit under budget. We worked really hard. I've sat here for about an hour watching things not come in over budgets, under budget. So I just want to say, you know, that we, this was a good project, and we worked hard on it. And, and we just, we appreciate you considering this, the staff. Maybe I said too much, but that's how I feel about it.
Thanks, Brad. Public comment.
Rick Robinson, Mayor Commissioners, just a couple of issues. I was unable to be here last Tuesday, which obviously was the la, the week after the election. Wanted to come down and just so, I think there's something got lost in the wash and all that. Joe, those, the money that the city has spent on that land that now is not going to be purchased.
Is this about the library?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I thought you were just calling for public comment.
No, public comment of the, of the library, I'm sorry. Okay, back to the commission then. I do appreciate, Dave, you know, your comment early, and Brad, thank you for your comments about the fifty-two thousand. I, I'm in agreement, I just, I brought it up yesterday.
Your, your choice, but that's what, it's our recommendation.
Okay. Well, questions, comments? Okay. Then if there are no other comments, then I would consider approval of the change orders for BA Green in the amount of six hundred and ninety thousand nine hundred and eighty-three dollars, and change order for Gould Evans in the amount of sixty-seven thousand, six hundred and fifty-three dollars and eighty-four cents. Authorize both the final payments to BA Green and Gould Evans upon completion of the punch list items. And then also to place the fifty-two thousand forty-one dollars in the city's capital improvement reserve fund and allocated specifically for future library maintenance needs.
So moved, second.
Motion made in second for approval was made by Commissioner Dever, second by Commissioner Reardon. All in favor of that motion, aye? Aye. Opposed, that passes four zero. Thank you all very much. Next item, consider authorizing staff to solicit qualification proposals for the engineering, design and construction plans for Castle Drive, Bob Billings to Sixth Street reconstruction project. And consider accepting federal aid highway safety improvement program funds for the intersection of Castle and Harvard Drive.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners, Dave Cronin, city engineer in the Public Works Department. Tonight, we're seeking authorization to, to send out an RFQ to get proposals on design services for Castle Drive from Bob Billings to Sixth Street. We've kind of identified this stretch of arterial street as our next major reconstruction project. As we've been making progress throughout the community the past few years with money from the infrastructure sales tax. And so this, just a little over a mile section of Castle Drive would, is been having frequent street maintenance repairs done to it annually. And in our PCI rating, it's forty-seven out of a hundred, so it's in, in pretty bad shape. And we're planning on reconstructing it to be typical like some of our other arterial streets we've done recently with removing all of the pavement, redoing the treated subgrade, underdrain, storm sewers, coming back and putting in a treated subgrade with concrete pavement. And, and obviously looking at complete street elements like shared use paths and/or bike facilities. And, and so tonight, we're just seeking authorization to send out the RFQ to get proposals. We've also just recently received word from KDOT that we've been selected to, to look at making improvements at Castle and Harvard with safety improvement funds. And back in May, we, with your direction, submitted an application to KDOT to look at this intersection. And we proposed in our application that we, we may want to improve the intersection to include a roundabout. And so KDOT has looked at all the applications they received throughout the state and done their cost benefit ratio analysis on all the applications. And this intersection, based off of their ratios of cost benefit, was selected to receive up to four hundred thousand dollars of federal funding that's administered through the state, and that's typically ninety, ten percent share that the state or the federal funds is ninety percent of the cost. And the, the city would be responsible for ten percent of the cost if we do choose to make those improvements. And so we've, like I mentioned, just recently found out about KDOT's decision on, on this intersection to, to look at using those safety funds. But we're not, you know, tonight, I guess discussing whether or not we will do that, a roundabout at that intersection. We certainly would go through all of the public process and, and neighborhood meetings and get feedback from folks, and certainly look at traffic volumes and everything else we do when we get, get through the design, going through the design process after we select a, a firm to do the plan. So like I said, tonight, we're just here to get authorization to send out the RFQ for this project and, and to accept the federal highway safety funds for the intersection. And if throughout the design process, the city commission chooses not to accept those funds or changes their minds, or, or, or city staff doesn't recommend to do a roundabout at that intersection, we can certainly at that time inform KDOT of that and tell them that we would not, that we would decline the, the funding for that. And with that, I guess I'll stand for any questions.
Questions and answer questions.
Is, do you know at this time, excuse me, if Harvard and Castle has sufficient warrants for traffic signal?
I do not, I do not know that.
But it could be close, I suppose.
It's probably pretty close, yeah. I mean, right now, in the peak hour, there's, there's delays at the intersection. I can't tell you, you know, usually we look at level of service at intersections, and we have not looked at what it is to date at that intersection. I mean, when we submitted the application to KDOT for safety funds, we submitted the accident history and the, and the volume of traffic. And there have been thirteen crashes in the past three years at that intersection. And we know the, the traffic volumes, but we haven't specifically looked at the intersection, the level of service of the intersection.
Okay, so if it comes down that it's warranted for a traffic light, then you've got that cost away against the cost of a, of a roundabout.
Sure, yep. If it, if it warrants improvements, which could be either a roundabout or a traffic signal, usually is the next step of improvement after a four-way stop, which it currently is. So yeah, either one of those, then we would weigh the impacts, the cost impacts of either a signal or a roundabout.
I've got one more question. In your RFQ, you, or your description says a bike path or bike lanes. Who decides that? Says a shared, let's see, I can't tell you. Shared use path and/or bike lane to comply with city complete street. So seems like if you had a shared use path, you wouldn't need a bike lane. And if you had a bike lane, you more than likely wouldn't get a shared use path.
Well, with every project, with every project, we look at, at the existing network of bike facilities. And we also have a, a long, a long-range bike plane that's kind of identified usually either or, shared use path or a bike lane for future improvements. And we would, we would look at that on this section and also get feedback from the bicycle advisory committee. City staff will look at, you know, what we feel is appropriate. And, and a lot of it's depended on right-of-way and utilities and driveways and access, and a lot of factors go into that. But we certainly will, will look at what, what makes the most sense for the network. And we know right now we have a little both on, in that area. We have a shared use path on the west side of Castle, south of Bob Billings, all the way down to Thirty First Street. And so we would take that into consideration.
Right, and then you've got the connecting link from Castle all the way east to Iowa. That's, that's a great spot. Well, for whatever it's worth, I'd, I'd like to see the shared pathway because I think that could, that's real flat up in there, and it makes a nice place for transportation. I mean, I could see a lot of people using it to go from Fifteenth Street to Bob Billings down to Sixth Street. So if the more protected it is, I think the more, obviously the more bike transportation you're going to have. And essentially, especially since it connects with the one of Fifteenth Street going, going east.
So David, yesterday you were talking about looking at the entire stretch of roadway, which would include looking at that center green island thing, you know, that runs down through the center of it. Could that be used as roadway space similar to what's to the south there?
The existing median, grass median?
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll, we'll look at, we'll look at the entire right-of-way. And, you know, when, when we're able to put in landscaped medians, we try to do that. The, the section south of Clinton Parkway does have some smaller grass medians, and we'll have to look at turning lanes, center turn lanes, and maybe. and we'll have to look at turning lanes, center turn lanes, and maybe other dedicated turn lanes in that section and see how much room we still have left after we include a shared use path or, or bike lanes, or whatever it may be, and what's the best use of that, of that right-of-way. And so it could, it could involve all, going back with medians, landscape medians, grass medians, or whatever it may be, or it may be a little narrower than it is now if we include additional facilities.
And didn't we, didn't we do the areas south of Bob Billings? Didn't we go to the narrower lanes?
We did, yeah. The, the lanes south of Bob Billings and, and most of the arterial streets we've been reconstructing are all eleven-foot lanes, and I believe this section is, right now, is twelve-foot lanes. And so we would, we would look at doing the same type of improvement with a little narrower lanes. Gives you a little more room. It's still an appropriate lane width for the speeds that travel on, on arterial street.
I was under the impression, when we had the discussion, I don't know, it seemed like forever ago, about south of Bob Billings, there are on Castle, that the narrow lanes acted as kind of a traffic control. Do we have any information, and I'm not asking tonight, but to be able to tell us, you know, accident rates, have they gone down with the, with the more narrow lanes, you know, anything like that? You know, might be history, you know, a little bit of history to help us, you know, in the future of that. Also, the four hundred thousand dollars that's up at Harvard and Castle, just real quick. I, I just want to make sure that I understand that. Is, is, is that money for the recommended improvements that are warranted at that intersection, or is that specifically for a roundabout, the four hundred thousand?
The four hundred thousand dollars is, we applied, in our application to KDOT, we mentioned that we would make the improvement to be a roundabout. And so if we chose not to do that roundabout improvement, it'd be very likely that they would not award the funding for, 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 if we went to a traffic signal or whatever improvements it would be. That's what the funding is for, is for safety. And most of the safety projects we apply for are usually either a roundabout or, or a center turn lane, or a turn lane that gets people out of a through lane to increase safety. So if we did not do the roundabout, it'd be very likely that there was, there's no other improvement that we would make at that intersection that we would still get funding for. Now, we can ask them and look at potentially if it was a traffic signal, and will that cause us crashes than we've seen previously, and we can always ask that question. But the way we submitted the application, it was for, was for a roundabout.
Can we make it roundabout and/or traffic signal?
We can, we can ask them, we can ask them to do that, but.
But here again, the commission's gonna have the opportunity to make the final decision whether or not that they want to do that improvement, or whatever improvement it is.
Absolutely.
So we already applied and asked for this money. It's not a matter of us approving that action. We did that previously, correct?
Correct, yeah. We applied in, in May and just recently.
So this would be a two-lane roundabout, more than likely, if you were to put one in here?
We'd have to look at it. It could, it could potentially be a hybrid roundabout. You have two lanes on Castle and one lane on, on, on Harvard, but.
So I really would like to see, just, I'm sure you won't have to make that decision until next year, but it would be nice to see how the one we put in at Walker Rusa and Inverness works out before we do anything else. I think that'd be my desire to not even consider it until we've seen how well it functions and if we can work it, work it into this. But, I mean, the money would be nice, but I would rather have a properly functioning intersection and one that, one that probably, I think Bob's close, I bet you it's really close to Meriting at signalization anyway, but I, before we make any of those comments, I'd like to see all those numbers, and it's not a commitment for me to build a roundabout there right now, so.
Just, just one other thing about that intersection is we've got a crossing guard there as well, so we've got to see how that functions, roundabout versus traffic signal, those types of things. That's not the only consideration. I know we have a crossing guard there that helps kids. I think it's at school, I don't know if the boundaries are changing, but I know there is a crossing guard there.
Okay, so then, here again, I just want to make sure that the second part of the action here, accepting, you know, the federal aid highway money, we're, we're not being forced to accept roundabout at all costs.
Correct, we are not. Let's keep the door open.
Let me, let me make sure I understand. If the city commission, if the study comes back and says do a roundabout, city commission says no, then we will then redesign and ask the state to either give us money for something else or we won't have the money. We won't, we don't get the money until they do the project anyway. It's probably on a reimbursement basis. So, but that, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
And we'll need to have, have discussions with KDOT. I mean, we just received the, the, the letter, and, and typically, those, these projects are standalone projects. And we'd have to discuss with them the opportunity to combine it with a city-funded project to reconstruct the pavement. So we'd have to, we still need to, to meet with KDOT and talk to them about how that would coordinate the two projects.
Thanks, David. Any other questions? Public comment?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to expand on Mr. Shum's comment. I don't know if you could do that within the scope of this work, but would the commission consider expanding the, the scope of this project in the sense that from Sixth and Castle, since there's gonna be all this engineering and forces out there, you know, out there, would it be an economy of efficiency to design a sidewalk from Sixth, at least to Falls Creek? There is no sidewalks between Sixth Street and Falls Creek Turn Entrance, then on to Peterson. So there's been many a times during inclement weather, people are forced to either walk in the median of Castle or they're on the side of the road, and in dark conditions, you know, very, very dangerous out there during inclement weather when people are forced to be in the street when there's no sidewalks in that area. So I don't know if that would be something the commission would consider as an add-on to this or expand the scope of the project, but it would certainly make foot traffic much more desirable. And I forgot the word that Mr. Shum used for, I guess it would be shared access bikes and, and foot pedestrian as well, but maybe that's something that could be considered, because I know you can then go all the way from the north of the city on Castle to, to complete south part of the town, just in one swoop, and not have to be in the street.
David, you want to answer that question about that possibility?
Yeah, it's, I mean, with your direction, we can expand the scope of the project. And right now, and I'll pull up the map, we've kind of allocated or budgeted five million dollars in, in construction and design costs for this project next year. Historically, with a mild reconstruction, we're around four to five million dollars for design and construction. And this is a little bit longer than a mile, and, and with, with seeing, we, I think we would need to do a little bit of improvements at the intersection of Bob Billings Parkway and Castle, as far as at least the pavement goes in, in the intersection, so that's not entirely shown on here going in. So it's probably gonna stretch a little beyond our typical one-mile project. And so if, if the fund, if there's certainly funds within the budget, we could certainly love to install shared use path or sidewalks north of Sixth Street to Peterson. I think that was the request. And I've gotten questions about that stretch of, why there wasn't a sidewalk before, so, and that could, that could be added on to the scope of the project.
That may be a significant cost, may exceed our budget. We've looked, we've looked at it before, at Castle, when we rehabilitated that a couple of years ago. It was, it was significant because of the terrain.
Okay, so when, when is it, when is the fi- final action need to be taken on this, start this, while we look and see if it goes over our budget?
Well, we're just, as far as the action on sending out the RFQ.
There's not dates we have to hit here, really immediate?
No, no. It's, it's city schedule, project, and there's, you know, at this point, we're just gonna send out, send, send out, get proposals, at least for this section, and we can always add, after we select a firm for this project, we could always look at what's a cost estimate to do this and, and add that on to the scope of the project.
Would the commission like to have that looked at?
Can I make sure I understand? So we're going to use Complete Streets guidelines to complete Castle from Bob Billings to Sixth Street, yes?
Yes.
Your estimate for that is roughly five million dollars, and now we're asking if we can also look at using maybe funds for this project to install pedestrian or a shared use path on the north side of Sixth Street, on the same street, not associated with roadwork?
Correct, that's my understanding.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm just asking the question, would we like them to look at that if possible?
Sure, I mean, if, there's, there's only one sidewalk I think I'm looking at right now. It's not, it's not very well.
There's not one behind your house?
I'm gonna have to excuse myself. Our house is on the west side of Castle.
It's not a very well sidewalk.
There's, Mr. Robinson's correct, there's no sidewalk.
So are you foreign or again?
Well, I'm, for whatever you all want. No, it's, it's, it's needed. I mean, there's, the topography's not particularly good. Comments exactly on point that there's not a good place to walk on there as well. No. You got, you got a little bit, you know, as you go down from, was it River View? Down, you know, that's pretty, pretty steep, and right, a lot, I see people running in the median, which I don't know how smart that is.
There's not a lot of right-of-way down there.
Somebody got hit over there the other day.
Yeah, so I mean.
I don't know if it's, I don't know if it's this project or a gap sidewalk at some point, but.
That's right.
It, it's, it's definitely a gap. I think there is a sidewalk on the west side of Castle from Fall Creek Farms to Peterson. And when we rebuilt Castle north of Peterson, it's got all kinds of stuff.
That's right.
Well, let's look at that and see.
But.
If we need to, if we need to look at it again, let us know. Okay, any other comment? Thanks, David. Okay, then the item that is before us is to authorize staff to solicit the qualification proposals for the engineering, design, construction plans for Castle, Bob Billings to Sixth Reconstruction Project, accepting the federal aid highway safety improvement program funds for the intersection of Castle and Harvard, and also to look at a shared use possibility of a shared use path north of Sixth Street to Peterson, correct?
Right.
Do I hear a motion for approval?
Second.
Motion made in second for approval, made by Commissioner Shum, second by Commissioner Reardon. All in favor of that motion? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes four zero. General public comment? Nothing, okay. General public comment? Yes, ma'am?
Good evening. I'm Mary Beth Beilek, six nine two North, fourteen eighty-three Road. I'm a mother of a police officer, Aaron Lawrence, Jay Beilek. He's been on the force about twenty-three years before. I'm also a member of Lawrence Police Foundation, which we founded three years ago. Anyway, when Jay first got on the force, I took a tour of the police department downtown, and quarters were pretty tight then. Office space was terribly tight. And it's even tighter now because we've increased our officers by quite a few. There's a hundred and fifty-one commissioned officers now, as I understand, according, or as of this year. And I'm sure back in the nineties, there probably weren't quite that many. In October, I took a recent tour of the facilities, and the working conditions are deplorable. Number one, the evidence room, it's three stories high, and the evidence officer has to climb on extension ladders. Well, you can imagine how many pieces of evidence there are, thousands of pieces, to try to house and try to retrieve that evidence. Number two, when the officers report for their shift, sometimes there are like eighteen officers coming on at one time, and a lot of the time, there's maybe eight or nine computer stations open, so those officers can get in there to complete their work, you know, before and after a shift. So it's a hurry-up-and-wait situation to get that work done before they get out there on the street and after they come back. Number three, officers having to interview a victim or a witness, or maybe a family member out in a public hallway. Number four, the computer techs that, or the, the computer tech officers that work on repairing the computers in, in the patrol cars, they have to be done in the patrol car under hot temperature, in hot temperatures, in frigid temperatures, and due to no parking garage. I saw a recent photo of a police officer bending over with his backside exposed, on his hands and knees, out of the, one of the police SUVs, trying to work on them. Taking this issue to a vote was obviously a poor choice. We should not have to subject our police officer's facility to another vote. I urge you as commissioners, I think this would be lowering our standards, and I urge you commissioners to reach a, a solution to keep our community safe and keep, you know, by getting this facility built as soon as possible. Folks have said that we need more officers.
This Beilek?
Rather than building a new building, but we don't have any room for new officers. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Other comment?
I'll reserve my comments for maybe another night, but in reference to the comments that just happened, the, the evidence room that she speaks of is one that, again, I think Mr. Harper put in the paper many things that need to be done, or needs to be some audits done. One thing that comes to mind is, how often does the city court and how often does the Douglas County District Attorney file motions to destroy evidence, destruction of the evidence? Are there still, like, when I was a police officer there, you still had beer cans that were seized many years before from a minor in consumption or minor in possession of alcohol. Does those type items still exist in the evidence room? If they do, let's get rid of them. Let's free up some space. I don't think that this proposal or the tax-issued vote was not a vote against the police. I mean, the group I was a blog to, we made a crystal clear, we're not against the police. You know, we believe they need a facility. We will help support discussions for a new facility, but it has to be done in a way that, that's just basically not designed and said, this is what you're gonna have to get. The, the public wasn't involved in that. Again, it was kind of like what I'd stated earlier about Rock Chalk Park. It was like, here's what we want, you know, live with it or, you know, there's not a whole lot of public discussion about the ins and outs of it, because we're always told, well, you're not a police expert. Well, I'm not, I mean, in the sense that I'm no longer a police officer, but one thing for sure is that why do we need a two-hundred-and-forty-nine-dollar-per-square-foot gymnasium for the police officers in a police building? Those are discussions that the public need to have. Is that absolutely necessary for them to have? As Mr. Dever corrected me, it's a twenty-two-point-five-million-dollar project we have out there and a new workout facility and gym. Can they use that? Can they engage in the community and get out and know the public by engaging in that instead of walling themselves up in a police facility to work out? Things like that need to be discussed. And again, is the facility gonna be needed? Sure. I don't, we never disagreed with that. But the thing about the police interviews and things like that, a lot of times shoplifters or swamp people are coming to report crimes, yeah, you talk to them outside. That, that, that happened all the way back to nineteen ninety when I was there. So this is nothing new, and it's not something that is exacerbated and, and creates the inability to fight crime. It's just property reports coming in the front door is what it is. And, or they call in and, well, we had a name for it called teleslave, because you were tied to a phone, and then you got to take police reports over the phone and things like that. So I think that this issue is gonna come back, as you all know, so I think we just need to engage the community and find out exactly what we need, where we need to locate it, and let's get it done. Let's have something. Thank you.
Any other comment? Okay, future agenda items?
Mayor, you've indicated that next week, while we will have a full commission, we're not gonna have a number of agenda items because it's just a week of Thanksgiving, but then we'll be back on December the second with the, the rezoning that you deferred this evening. we'll be back on December the 2nd with the rezoning that you deferred this evening and probably some other items as well. I think there's a revised request from the, the Here Kansas Group that were, you indicated, Mayor, that that'd be appropriate to have on the December 2nd agenda as well. So we'll at least have those items on December 2nd and we'll obviously have an update on your discussions on December 2nd. Hopefully, an update on the Main Street project as well and probably a few other items.
Okay.
And when we get to calendar, you see how we're hopefully rearranging the December schedule.
Commission items? Any commission items? Okay. Calendar?
This is particularly for Commissioners Dever and Shum, the, the changes there, December 23rd, December 30th, work for you. And then we do have the study sessions with Wicket on the 2nd and then RG Fiber on the 9th. Is that working on your calendars? Just wanted, while you all were out of town, I didn't know that...
Is the 23rd a short meeting or a long meeting?
The cancel, we're canceling the meeting on the 23rd and then if there's three Commissioners available, we'll do bill paying on December the 30th. And no, no substantive items on December the 30th.
I've got to check my December 23rd date.
Well, we're not meeting on the 23rd. Canceling the 23rd.
We're canceling the 23rd.
Are you available on the 30th?
No. Is the 30th, are we meeting in the morning?
That's our preference.
Okay, yeah, we can meet at 9 o'clock in the morning on the 30th.
Just so I know. I could do that by telephone.
Okay.
I could probably do it, yeah.
I think Jeremy could, could meet on the 30th as well.
Okay, I'll be here on the 30th. So we'll just plan on 9 o'clock on the 30th and we'll cancel the 23rd.
Is that...
It's not me. So you haven't updated the calendar here?
No, no, I'm just looking...
23rd says we've got a meeting.
I'm looking at, right, because I'm looking at the bottom of the agenda where we put it as ten of you. I'm sorry.
23rd will be gone, the 30th's at 9 o'clock in the morning.
Okay, 23rd's gone.
We will update it. You can, you can ask Bobby tomorrow to do all of that.
The 30th is at 9:00 a.m.
Yeah, okay. I don't think I've heard of 30th.
Okay. Edit the calendar?
Yes, ma'am.
Nothing else? Tell them it's been 5:18. A motion to adjourn.
Move.
Second.
Motion made in second to adjourn. Shum, Rurden, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Both, we adjourn. Bye.